I'd like to call to order the August 19, 2020, meeting of the Coasid School Committee. All school committees, members that are present, please indicate so by saying present as I call your name. Mrs. Colery. Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Mrs. Mar.
Present.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Present.
And President Craig McClellan. As I did last time, I'd like to preface the meeting with just a few quick procedural comments. First and foremost, the public comment section is reserved for, to raise, for the members of the public to raise issues that aren't already related, or aren't related to issues that are already on the agenda. So in other words, if you have an issue that you want to discuss related to the reentry program, that is an agenda item. So the appropriate time to raise that issue would be at that point in the agenda, and not the public comment section. Second, and just to reiterate, tonight is, is not the final vote on the reentry plan. It is just another public forum, in a sequence of public forums, to have open discussion and promote collective and collaborative thought on this issue. The final vote is anticipated to occur at next week's special meeting on August 26th at 6:00 PM. That is when we anticipate having a final vote on the reentry plan for our public schools. So with that said, I'd open it up for any public comment, and let me just refer to the Q and A feature here. Someone states, "Thank you for all you're doing." You're welcome, and thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
I just want to give it about 20 seconds to let people ask comments and get them typed if they, if they have any that aren't related to agenda items. I should also note, I failed to note at the beginning of the meeting, this is in accordance with the governor's declaration of a state of emergency in the Commonwealth, this, this meeting is obviously being held virtually for that reason, and it's also being streamed live. We're trying to get it broadcasted on Coasid 143, as all meetings are, but we're having a little bit of technical difficulties there. Okay. So I had a couple of comments came in. One is from Megan Berry. I should also note, everyone, as you're making these comments, please note your address and your full name if your username isn't your name, just as you would as you were in a real live meeting. So that's just how we create the record for the meeting. Megan Berry asks, "Are you allowed to give any updates on negotiations with the union?" This, this does relate to the agenda item, and there, I think, a lot of questions related to that. And Megan Berry's address is 11 Tad Lane, for the purpose of the record. I will just say that we're not able to give too many updates in terms of the negotiations, just that they're ongoing, and that it's our obligation to have those, and that they bring important perspectives of the faculty to the table. Mark Bros, or Bros, I apologize if I am not pronouncing your name correctly. Will tonight be the final vote on TECA? Again, and Mark's address is 11 Deep Run, for the record. Again, Mr. Bros, or Bros, that's related to the reentry program, but I will say that there's no final vote on the reentry plan being taken tonight. Let's reiterate that for everyone that's just coming in. Okay, I don't see any others. So we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. And at this time, I would turn the meeting over to Dr. Patrick Sullivan, our superintendent of schools here in Coasid.
Thank you very much, Craig, and thank you, school committee. It's been obviously a busy, busy week. I guess it's been a week or two weeks since we last met. Really listening to a lot of input from families, trying to get back as much as we can information as we have it. I just want to thank the community for continuing to keep the discourse very collegial, congenial, respectful. It's been, this is, these are tough times for everybody, and we are really trying to attend to what's best for our students, for our staff, and for our families, and been a lot of, there's a lot of emotion behind it. I, you know, I've said in the past that, you know, there's nothing more emotional than our, than our kids, and the belief in giving them the best we can possibly give them. So I really appreciate the tenor of the conversation that we've had, and hopefully you felt that we've been receptive and equally respectful in our, in our interactions with you. You know, we're going to certainly continue that. I'm gonna stop by today, just talking about kind of one particular hinge point that we have decided to shift. And you will see this, school committee, in our finalized, or are the version that will be voted on, on the 26th. And as, as we've advertised, and as we have put out there in forums, in our four family forums, we have, really, we've had two models for the hybrid. One for the elementary, which, which for all intents and purposes are two cohort groupings, and it's a two-one-two system. In other words, cohort A would go back on Monday, would be in person, Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday is an all-remote day, and at the elementary, and we've explained what that looks like, I think, pretty thoroughly at this point. Thursday and Friday is cohort B. And, and then, of course, cohort A on Thursday and Friday is, is getting some remote learning on those days, and we're really advocating for the use of that Wednesday for some deep cleaning in addition to what I articulated in terms of a remote-only day. At the high school and middle school, what we, and the reason behind that model, by the way, and we've talked about this, is that we really feel with the, the basic skill development of that younger student, it's very important to get that face-to-face time, and not to let a longer period of time go. And that the, the, the ability to access remote learning from an, from an elementary perspective is a little bit inhibited by the fact that they haven't developed those independent skills yet, and it's just, it's just naturally developmental. Or at the high school and middle school, what we've advocated for is more of a, the model is the same thing with two cohorts, but the cohorts being divided differently. We had advocated for the cohorts being divided at the middle school alphabetically, and the cohorts being divided at the high school on a grade-level basis, because we thought that was going to really help with scheduling. And what we were promoting was a plan that had cohort A going back one week in person, face-to-face, and then the next week it would be cohort B going back in person, face-to-face, full week. And we were really advocating for a synchronous delivery of lessons. In other words, students could tune into a lesson and see it being delivered live. Well, you know, I don't want to get too much into our conversations with the association and the negotiating, but we, part of listening to feedback from parents has led us to believe that the model that would be most appropriate for Coasid is to switch that middle-high school model to mirror in structure the model we have at our elementary. It allows for a couple of things. It allows for a division alphabetically, which is going to align the middle and high school precisely. We also have the ability with the cohorts, which will be coming out Friday, by the way. I'll mention that more formally in a minute, but they're going to be coming out Friday at every level. This cohort division would allow us alphabetically at both the middle and the high school level to, to not only get the middle and high school on the same page, but to allow basically the whole district to be on the same, or very close to the same division and schedule, which from a childcare perspective, and we've heard these concerns, does allow for some of the older students to help with some of the younger students. It also allows for really synchronous model in terms of our division. So I think from a community perspective, we feel it lines up much better. Also, as we're continuing our discussions with our association, the thought and the ability to be able to do that fully synchronous streaming is not yet solidified. And we are still in the process, and I want to be respectful with this, still in the process of discussing it and figuring out if we can do it. If for some reason we can't do that full synchronous model, I, we just are not going to advocate for that one week, in-person, one-week remote. It's just far too much time to not be connected with a staff member in a, in a synchronous fashion. So this model, which really is done for community reasons, also, as we move further and further into our negotiations, it works from a learning perspective as well. So I'm going to start.
You just specify, when you say the association, you're talking about the CTA, the Coasid Teachers Association?
Correct. Thank you. Yes, I am, absolutely. And I just want to go in a little bit more deeply what the middle school and high school plan will look like. Can anybody see my screen there? I just want, just somebody let me know if you can see it.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great. So at the middle school, and this is the PREZI that we used, all of this will be updated in our finalized plan, which you'll, school committee will be voting on. And it's, obviously, the PREZI has been updated, but the, the new cohort organization is just as I had articulated. The student body at the middle school will be divided alphabetically and assigned either in cohort A, cohort B. These groups will alternate between in-person and remote learning model. The cohorts will have two in-person learning days and three remote learning days. Wednesday will be a remote learning day for all students, again, allowing us to do some deeper cleaning at that point. And then we have information here regarding which students will be in cohort, and cohort A will be forthcoming, and I can tell you, it'll be forthcoming on Friday. So you'll receive all of that on Friday, which will be, I think, a helpful thing for folks. Just to continue a little bit more with this, the schedule will be, will be, again, flattened out with the utility at the end. This is our plan right now, with lunches, lunch A and lunch B. You can see when they take place. Very similar to what we had before, 44-minute classes. Easier for remote learning students to maintain attention if we, if we have that ability to do that. Utility at the end of the day will be allow students to begin homework. By, by removing CMS traditional rotation of periods, the schedule provides more consistency and predictability. As Principal Mills had mentioned, the first period will be nine minutes longer. That will compensate for tardiness due to no buses, if that is the case. It will also give students more of an opportunity to settle into their routines, and teacher teams will collaborate on student workload as they were in the previous model. It's still our plan that during our learning, remote learning week, in the hybrid, students at home are expected to synchronously access the in-person learning instruction. You may want to talk about that if there are questions going further, what that will look like. But, you know, remote learning, in its, in essence, is different than in-person learning in that, you know, you're really working on some more independent work. But the ability to tie in every period at the beginning of a class, at least, is really profitable, to keep kids on the same schedule. And the ability, if we, you know, are able to, to follow through with this, to have that lesson synchronized, synchronized and delivered for students to see at home, we believe would be very profitable in any moment. And then, we talked about this, this really hasn't changed too much, but this is how it all comes together. This was, I don't want to go over this too indepthly, because Principal Mills already has, but I wanted you to, to know that, you know, we're making adjustments, but there are some things that are staying the same. The schedule be maintained if we're, when we're in, if we are in a full remote learning model, and students will be required to participate in their scheduled classes via Zoom. Students will be expected to follow attendance and remote learning behavior expectations. All of that, which is similar to what we had in the past, will be applicable to this different model of lesson delivery. So moving forward, a second. Pardon me. At the high school, it's very similar. You can see the schedule in front of you. I'll let you take a second to see that, but you can see mask breaks are attenuated into the, into the schedule. Students are grouped alphabetically, again, group A falling between A and L, and group B, M through Z. You'll get your actual cohort groupings, and where the Ls are broken on Friday. Each group will attend a two-day in-person, three-day remote schedule, same thing as at the middle school, essentially. And then, very much the same in this, traditional schedule with social distancing and other safety precautions. Passing time between periods are relaxed, outside spaces are used. You know, we talked about all of this quite, quite indepthly in previous sessions. Remote learning, again, the idea is for students to, to log in and to have attendance taken, and then to be able to, to work with the teacher who, who will be attenuating to the class and teaching the class. And then, again, how does it come together? At the high school, it's really considerations for simplifying student routines. Grading will occur, assessment practices will be reconsidered in order to establish equitably addressed in-person versus remote learning. And we're really trying to get as much physical presence in the building as possible, which is, which is important for us. And then, if it's full remote, it's very much like what I added here to, I had just talked about would occur at the middle school. So that is that. That is, I wanted to make sure I presented that to you. I don't know, at this point, Chairman McClellan, if there are any questions you want to go over with that before I move to my next item?
Any questions, any members of the school committee have any questions specifically related to that? Or do we want to sort of wait until Dr. Sullivan sort of?
Can I just ask a question as a point of clarification? I thought I saw on the high school segment of the PREZI for remote learning that, I'm sorry, the middle school, that Remote Learning Week, I thought it said that, but we're talking about putting that whole district on the same schedule, right?
Yeah, then if that, if that was the case, that's just an error in the. Yeah, no, thanks. We, we adjusted it. It's possible.
I, yeah, totally understandable. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Thank you. I didn't catch that. There, there is absolutely, yeah, again, it's the same model as the, in, in essence of its breakup, as the, or its consistency as the elementary school.
Thank you.
It's nothing foreign to what we presented. It's just, we, we determined that adhering the two would be better for a few reasons, which I presented. So yes, thank you for that clarification.
I, I think, Dr. Sullivan, the best way to go is sort of to hit on, you know, your entire report related to the reentry plan, and then we can have some discussion. I just want to note, there are some questions coming in from the community, and I'll just say that, you know, they're all going to be addressed at once. We're not just going to take them as they come in, because we, we, it'll, it'll derail the conversation too much. So we'll address all comments at once, and, and, but I think that, Dr. Sullivan, if you finish your thoughts, we'll, we'll do it.
Yeah, that's the major, that's the major shift right now. We have been talking about, and I've been communicating with parents, as has Dr. Scollins, about our remote-only option, which we are solidifying as our TECA option. I know there's been some, some questions about, you know, why we're choosing TECA, and essentially, it comes down to, we believe in it, we vetted it, we think it's a good product. And also, the fact that we're unable to really provide another option because of the size of our district, the amount of students who are interested in full remote-only, I should say, the amount of families who are interested for the students, it's very low. It's, you know, it's going to be between 60, 60 and 70 students at the most, and they're spread out throughout every level of the district. And we just don't have the staffing to do it. Right now, I have no information, or very little information, about any staff member who is unable to return. And we're a few weeks away from the start of school. So we are at the point now where we're offering what we've vetted as our best model for full remote-only. And what we're going to be asking the families who have, have indicated that they have an interest in it, we're going to be sending a, a memo to them. We've already informed them of this, but we're going to be asking them on Thursday, tomorrow, to confirm their commitment to TECA by the end of the day Friday, because that does impact the way we set up our classes and our cohorts. And as I've said before, we're right now looking for a commitment for a semester in TECA. And really, to make TECA work at the high school level, it's really a year-long commitment. We'll work with families, we always do, and work with them individually, but I do want to make it clear that that is our expectation right now for what is our best full remote-only option. Anything you want to add to that, Dr. Scollins?
No, I think, I think you did a nice job, you know, expressing it, and we did look at alternatives. And I've spent time with Desi looking at TECA, and also spent a lot of time with the superintendent from TECA. And, and so I'm very comfortable with, with TECA, and I think it's a good option for us.
Yeah, and I would add that, you know, we, we're trying to get as much information as people need to them. We have reached out to TECA to make sure if there are individuals that want to talk with someone from TECA. We have that person now ready to, to do that. So, so we're, you know, very much willing to, to help with that, so that people can have the most information as possible when they make this, you know, I realize, important decision.
And one more thing, I'm Dr. Sullivan, I'm sorry. You know, the, I think sometimes it's a little difficult too, because remote learning does look so different than a traditional classroom. And so I think sometimes when you look at a virtual school, it may, it may not appear to be as robust as if a student was in all day, but they are still teaching, and it is very robust. It's just in a different fashion for the students to be in.
It's, it's not only is it robust, I agree with that. It's something they've been doing since 2004. They have a very strong, and as you said, robust way of delivering both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And, you know, you'll get the, the full TECA model with that in terms of the way they attend to their classes. And if you have questions about what that specifically looks like, we'll certainly be helpful with that. But really, that is our best, and we believe a very viable learning, remote-only model that we can present right now.
I see, I see a lot of questions coming in related to that, so I think we're going to be talking about that a lot more in a few minutes.
That's fine. Do you want to take them now? I'm going to keep going with the total information.
Keep them going, and, and.
Okay. Yeah, and I just want to preface all of these, this is, these are hard, hard times for everybody. We're trying to create the best scenario we can possibly create, and not lead anyone into a scenario we can't stand behind. I want to make, be, be clear on that. But we also have to deal with the size of the district, the resources we have, and the information we have available to us. I think those are real important factors that we need to consider as we, as we create and advocate for a particular model in any of these situations. So just information that will be coming out shortly, is our cohorts will be coming out on Friday. We hope to have our schedules, and I should, what I mean by that is your, in elementary, your teacher assignments on Friday. If for some reason we can't, only because we're attenuating to TECA, it would be very soon thereafter.
Dr. Sullivan, could you tell the, the parents that are watching, the families that are watching, how physically that's going to be communicated? Is it going to be communicated through email, or are they going to have to call in?
Yeah, Dr. Scollins, have you thought about that? I, I know that, um, the, I believe the kindergarten screening information was sent out today. And I know when the parents are, call in, they will get their teacher assignment. So I think that's, that's one way.
Right. Typically, the, the teacher assignments go out via, for elementary, go out via mail. We're hoping that we can work it through Aspen, and it will come out in an email, but I, we're still going to work on that. So I'm not exactly sure, but that's our hope, is that that will come out that way. And I believe, for the middle and high school, I think you just log into Aspen and get your schedule. But, but for the elementary, that will be, I'm going to work that out tomorrow.
Yeah, and the cohorts, we believe, will be communicated.
That will be email.
Be email, so everyone will know that. And, and the buses aren't far behind, you know, the, the last step in our buses is just to get that remote learning group squared away, and we'll be ready to go with that. So it's our goal, Chairman McClellan, to have everything out in the hands of parents by early next week, the full package.
And can you just, for everyone's identification, just discuss briefly the, some of the challenges involved with the sort of immediate dissemination of that through email? You know, you're saying, Dr. Scollins, that you're working through it. What exactly are you working through? I mean, I think that if I'm a parent or a family member watching at home, I'm wondering, you know, why, it's so late in the game here, why can't we just get that information?
So normally, it go, well, first of all, they're still waiting on some of the TECA information, right, to make sure that the cohorts are as even and balanced as possible. And in addition to, you would be, we've had students leave and students enter. So we've had a lot of movement, in particular at the elementary level. So I think there, that's why the, although the framework is there and most is done, it's, it looks like every day there's a little bit of a shifting that's happened, so that's why. So I think that as long as people are comfortable with the fact that, you know, we are sending it out, and this is based on the information we have right now, they've usually sent it in letter form. So if we were to send it out email, it would just be new, and we haven't done it yet with Aspen. So that's just the reason that I questioned, the cohort's easy enough. That's not the problem.
No.
It's the teacher assignment that's.
And, and one, and the thing about it is, Craig, is that having been a, you know, building principal, both of us have, we want to get it right. The last thing you want to do is have to walk back information about a schedule, because you have to be equitable. And remember, we have very strict restrictions on the amount of kids we can put in our cohorts and in our classrooms because of our social distancing. So they're really trying to be as accurate as possible, and that's, that's really been the delay right now. But, and I can totally appreciate where people are coming from, but we're just trying to get it right for you, because I, we know how damaging it can be, it can be to get information out, and then have to walk it back, because there are so many moving pieces right now that we're trying to solidify. So I, I do beg your patience on this, and I, I assure you, we'll have it out. If not, Friday is very, very soon thereafter with all of these pieces together.
And you'll strive for email, but if not, regular mail, or email or Aspen, I guess?
Yeah, we're going to try with Aspen and email, because that's more immediate. And then maybe we'll follow up with a snail mail as well. But I, we real, we recognize the need for people to have this information fairly immediately. Okay, so moving with that.
Any members of the community, committee have any questions thus far?
I have a quick question. What, I mean, obviously, at the elementary level, we're moving on essentially by class, so we know who, kind of who's in our class anyway. Is, when cohorts are released, are families going to be informed of who is in their cohort? Or is that just going to be up to them to kind of figure it out?
Yeah, we're not usually allowed to release that information, so unless we get permission from parents to do that, so that's part of.
We have to be really careful with FERPA and giving people information about any of that. You know, e- even posting classes, class lists, and having people go and look at the posting of a class list is a potential violation of FERPA. And there's nothing secretive here, like we, we're not hiding anything. We just can't, we just have to follow the regulations behind, behind FERPA.
Anything else for Dr. Sullivan? Okay, Dr. Sullivan.
Okay, so some other, other changes that have come within the last day. Literally, we had some major things, and this is very in tune with what we've been experiencing throughout this whole situation, is this is incredibly fluid. We get information sometimes at Friday at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night. We get information that comes at us right before school committee meetings, and we.
Dr. Sullivan, this is from the Commonwealth you're talking about, from Desi?
Oh, yeah, this is, this, exactly. See, I'm already, I'm so in that loop, I didn't even mention that. Yeah, it is the, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I know they're doing their work there too, and they're trying to be careful and thorough, and they're working with the Department of Public Health, and just like we're working with our local bargaining units, they're looking, working with the Massachusetts Teachers Association. So there's a lot of, of moving pieces. I did release the metrics that the governor and the Department of Public Health have adopted, and Desi has adopted to, to determine, in their words, not in, in ours necessarily, when a district is appropriately placed in a remote situation. Or in our case, where we have a very, very low infection rate here in Coasid, we're in the unshaded section, which is the section that really, at this point, and we realize, you know, this is, this can shift, but right now, we're in that stage where we're expected to try to get our kids back in as in-person a way as we possibly can with the social distancing restrictions that have been placed upon us in place. So we're, we're working to do that, and that's a good thing. So we want to keep that, that we want to keep where we are right now, believe me. So that, that'd come out, I know I had distributed that last Friday. Changes in sports, and so there's been a lot of waiting for this information. And the DESI has come out, working with the MIAA, to determine which sports would be safe to participate in, and how they would attend, attend to the fact that if the sports that weren't being participated or weren't being advocated for from a health reason because of the contact of the sport, that there'd be, may be an opportunity for those sports to happen if things change moving forward. So what they've advocated for and put in place is a four-season schedule. So the good news is, and we know how important it is for a lot of our students, and for, you know, people all over the place to do sports. You know, I don't want to, I mean, obviously, we want to educate our kids, but we're, we're really working on the whole kid. So it is nice to see that they've figured. So it is nice to see that they've figured out a way to create scenarios where kids can come back and do sports safely. The fall season, which is set to start September 18th, that'll be the, the preseason on that. Will include golf, cross-country running, field hockey, soccer, gymnastics, girls volleyball. Obviously, some of these we have and don't, but this is, these are all the sports. Fall, swimming, diving, football practice, okay? And they're, they're really using the, the modifications that are in place for practices. Cheer practice, unified basketball practice. And there's a whole set of modifications around what practice looks like. And just like anything else, that's a privilege for us. We're, I know I've already talked to Athletic Director Rotandi. We're really going to look at making sure that the students know that these things are important and we need to advocate. We need to follow all of the, the, the rules in place to make sure that we can put them into place. The winter is to be announced, the schedule, but that would be winter gymnastics, boys and girls indoor track, ski, dance, winter swimming, diving, cheer, hockey, baseball, wrestling. There's a floating season, which is all about, all to be announced. Sports unable to play in the earlier seasons may engage in the play that is appropriate at that time. Schools that offer only remote learning in the early fall may use the season for play that was missed. The impact of full remote learning, those schools who are going to that on sports is to be determined by the local school district. So that would be really something to be voted on by us if we were in that scenario. And I, I mean, you actually, I don't, I don't vote. And then the spring would be girls golf, baseball, softball, tennis, boys volleyball, girls and boys lacrosse, track and field and rugby. So you know, there's a lot of hope in this schedule and just like anything else, there's some changes that can come. But it was nice to see that they've figured a safe way to bring these sports back. The flu. So today it was announced and I believe there was a press conference. I was doing a million other things, didn't catch it. But Secretary Sutherland, who's been really helping Governor Baker quite a bit in the press conference, announced that there would be a required flu vaccine for every student by December 31st. So that's what was announced. And you know, there's, there's some medical and religious exemptions are allowable in the state of Massachusetts. But this is any, any student in kindergarten through grade, grade 12 are required to, to get that. That's just a point of information. That's not something that I did in any way. I'm just telling you what, what was delivered by the, by the, the state today. And then there were some protocols, there's some protocol shifts that I'll just quickly highlight. One second. So there was an issued memo by the DESE and the Department of Public Health updating on these. They updated, and this will all be changed in our remote plan, I know, I'm sorry, in our, our roadmap to reentry. A close contact was defined as only those who have been within six feet of distance of the COVID-19 positive individual for at least 15 minutes while the person was infectious. That's a change from what was previously guided to be all students in an elementary classroom would be defined as close contacts. So that is a, a, a pretty significant change in protocol. And then this is about a policy on when a close contact may return to school. A close, a close contact should be tested, but must self-quarantine for 14 days after the last exposure to the person who tested positive, regardless of test result. That's a shift from a close contact may return to school if they test negative for COVID-19, are asymptomatic and are wearing a mask. So they want that person out for the full 14 days. That's a shift. This is a policy, there's not a lot, there's just a couple more. Policy for when a student or staff person may return to school after COVID-19 symptoms. The new guidance is a symptomatic individual may return to school 10 days from the start of symptoms as long as their symptoms have improved and they have been without fever for at least 24 hours prior to their return to school. Before it was, they needed to self-isolate for 14 days and until asymptomatic. So there's been some shifting in that. There was a, a change in the, our medical waiting rooms. As, I like that term, I'm going to use it. We were calling it isolation room or sick room. A medical waiting room sounds so much better. But of course, I mentioned that we're going to be separating students who may have COVID-like symptoms from those students who may have skinned a knee or be in a nurse's office. But there wasn't really any firm guidance on how many folks could be in there. And it says, if feasible, schools are encouraged to provide individual students with their own waiting room. More than one student is in the same waiting room at a time. Each student must be six feet apart and wear a surgical mask, and that's at all ages. And that was a change from there's no specific capacity limit for the medical waiting room. So those are significant changes. And there's some other changes that were, were more minor that, that just complement, not necessarily substitute for things that were in there. And finally, just some good news, there's always good news is good. Dr. Scollins has sent out some updates to the community and I'll let you talk about that. Dr. Scollins, about some exciting events we have planned that will hopefully be very helpful to the community as well. Dr. Scollins.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. So we have created a couple of workshops for parents. We're also going to provide these same workshops or similar workshops to our staff when they come back in on the second, second of September. But our first workshop is on Friday and we had sent some information about it. And today we sent out information around how to get into it using the link that we provide for you. And that's with Dr. Plummer and Dr. Benoto, who are an adolescent psychiatrist and psychologist who work with schools and have been doing it for quite some time. And they are going to talk to families about SEL and, you know, how to re-enter into school. And so they're going to have, it's going to be a 90-minute interactive workshop where they're going to give you strategies and talk about, you know, how it is for your child and then really give you some strategies and allow you to ask questions. So that's going to happen at one o'clock on this Friday. And then next week, we're going to have Dr. Golden, who is going to speak with us about the impact of COVID-19 on the educational setting and really talk about wellness and health. And he is our district-wide pediatrician, physician. And he has many years' experience with working with families. And so he's going to offer us two workshops that I sent out information about today. One for elementary and also one for middle and high school. So we'll send out information next week about those links so that you can participate in, in that. So we're really looking forward to it. I think it'll be nice to be having families and staff hear the same information. Because I think that if we all have the same language and the same strategies, it's, it makes it so much better for our students. And I think it will make both family and staff feel more comfortable. Because whenever you get more tools in your toolkit, I know as a parent, it always makes me feel better that I can handle what's going on because sometimes, sometimes life's hard. And I'm going to say it's been a little bit tricky since, since all of this happened to us. So I'm really looking forward to having, having these doctors come in and talk to us. And we're really fortunate because our Director of Student Services, Barbara Swanka, she brought Dr. Plummer and Dr. Benoto to us. She has worked with them. So that's really exciting because she knows how, you know, how good they are with staff and families and, and that they're going to bring a lot to the table. So we're very excited about it.
Yeah, in addition to Dr. Benuto, Dr. Plummer and Dr. Golden, we do have, we are working to have a trauma expert come in and work with our staff to, to really help them be ready for our students as they come back. Because, you know, we're, we realize that every student has experienced some form of trauma from this experience and we need to make sure that we're attending to them. And that might be something we have available for our families as well. So Dr. Scollins is doing some great work with, with a lot of other people helping. So thank you, Dr. Scollins.
Thank you very much.
So Craig, I do have a hiring update. I don't know if you want me to do that?
No, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to pause here at this point in the superintendent's report and discuss the reentry plan and the, the many questions, address the many questions that the members of the community have posted relating to it. Before we do that though, I, I did, it was suggested to me, last meeting, I, I, I took the questions from the community prior to any deliberation from the school committee. It was suggested to me that in doing so, I may inadvertently, you know, restricted free discourse amongst the committee. So in order to, I, I did ask the committee before doing that informally what their opinion would be. Everyone seemed to acquiesce to that. But in, in the interest of avoiding that and to make it a little bit more of a formal, you know, sort of conclusion, I'd like to, I'd, I'd look for a motion to take public comment first before deliberating as a school committee on the issue. And there's a few reasons why I'd like to do that and this is why I did it last time. I think that this is a very impactful set of issues and a very impactful moment in time for all these families. And, and this is a very difficult forum to deal with this in. And I think that if I'm at home from that perspective, typing questions, I'm, I'm very eager and anxious about getting them answered. And in addition, I think there is, you know, I think hearing the various voices from the community prior to any deliberation really promotes more, I think, informed and productive discussion amongst the committee themselves. So I, I'd ask for, I don't want to do anything unilaterally this time. I'd ask for a motion to take the comments and questions from the community prior to any deliberations from the school committee at this time, even though it, it may not be, you know, typical protocol. Is there, is there a motion to that effect on the floor?
Do you hear me? I'd like to make a motion to answer the questions from the community prior to committee deliberation.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Caleri, thank you. Is there a second?
Can, Lydia St. Ange.
Seconded by Ms. St. Ange, thank you so much. At this point, I'm going to take a roll call vote, as we have to take a roll call vote and every single vote in this format in alphabetical order. Mrs. Caleri?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. Okay, so that was, that motion was unanimously approved. And so at this point, at this juncture, I'm going to take, I'm going to turn to some of the, the public comments. The first question I received is from Mr. Bill Greener. Mr. Greener lives on Black Horse Lane. He has a couple of questions. His first question is, have you considered, have, have you considered to provide a fully remote program for those families who wish to do this and then for the rest of the families, provide a full in-person, everyday program if school space allows? I, I, I mean, Dr. Sullivan, I guess I'll let you answer first.
Well, so there aren't enough, I mean, there's, we, we don't have enough folks in the district who are interested in a full remote program to, to bring the numbers down significantly enough to get all of our students in. It's, you know, some grades are interested in, there's only two or three kids, you know, that, that are, that want that. So it's, it's just not, it, it's not a number that brings it, if that's the question, Craig. It's not a number that brings it to be a, a situation where we can bring in, you know, a, a full in-person contingent of students.
I, I, I think that is the question. I, I think what, and just to sort of reiterate what you're saying, Dr. Sullivan, and please, any school committee member that wants to offer any information here. I, I think the consideration is unless there's a large enough contingent of students that want full remote, that will free up enough resources where we can actually offer that program simultaneously with the hybrid remote program. We really can't offer both at the same time, given the resource restrictions of our district. And I think he also asked about provide a full in-person, everyday program if school space allows. This, I, I, again, I think relates to the fact that not enough students would be fully remote to, to provide for, for that. And I think in the statement released by the school committee last night, we addressed the, the square footage and spacing issues at issue there with that consideration. His next question is, have you discussed any options about before and after-school programs?
Yeah, I'll let Dr. Scollins take that one.
So we started a partnership last year with the rec department so that this year, we would have a before and after-school program. So we've been in contact, Ted Carroll and I, the, the director, so we've been talking frequently. And our plan is to still offer before and after-school, just like we did before, when a student is in the building. So if you're cohort A, you could have before-school and after-school care at the elementary level. And we are hoping to do an, a before-school program for like about an hour or so for middle and high school for families that needed and for students who maybe want to get breakfast before they start school. So that is forthcoming.
Thank you. And I want to correct the record. I actually, I'm going by a couple pronouns I have here. That, those questions were from, from Nick Stelopoulos. Stelopoulos, I don't have an address. That was not Mr. Greener's question. So he's probably very frantic at home right now, thinking that I, I made up some different questions for him. But getting to Mr. Greener's questions of, of, again, Black Horse Lane. First, which, he asked a question related to, I think, our statement last night. I'm going to paraphrase, it's a little bit lengthy. He's essentially asking whether or not we're, we're issuing that as to brace the community for impact in that a full remote situation is coming? Or is it just that statement made in support of the draft plan that we've already approved in, in our preliminary vote? I, any members of the committee can join in, I'm only one, but my, my take on our collective voice was that we were simply voicing the, simply sort of informing everyone about the process that was involved and voicing sort of our perspective and why we supported that, that reentry plan. Is there anything that anyone wants to, to add to that? No, okay. His second question is, what if the teachers or the teachers' union said about the hybrid model that's been proposed? Are they on board? I thought they were supposed to give word on this by August 10th, but I never heard if they did or not. Dr. Sullivan, do you want to answer that?
Well, we're still, you know, we're still negotiating. They set out to negotiate three models, which of course, the in-person isn't really on the table now. So, you know, they're looking to negotiate the, you know, and this is what, this is what we were, we were set to do three models and they were set to try and negotiate three models. One was the in-person, which isn't on the table for us right now. One is the hybrid, which we have had discussions about. We haven't had a concluding discussion and I'll come to any MOA on that. And then we haven't really got into the remote model at this stage without going too deeply into the negotiations. That's, that's kind of where we are right now. Just to clarify, Craig, the, the vote, we did have a, we did have to present our model to the DESE originally August 10th, but we, it was shifted to August 14th. We had that vote, just as basically every district did in the state without a ratified agreement or I should say, an MOA with our union. But we had to submit a plan. So everyone did, everyone submitted a plan that was contingent upon further bargaining obligations. So I just wanted to, it looks like there's some questions about that, Craig, so I wanted to be clear on that. And yeah, that's kind of where we are, if that's enough of an answer, I guess.
Yeah, I think that we have seen a couple of questions about this. And I, I think that his, his next question relates to, to sort of the outcome of, of our bargaining sessions. And really the, I think the simple answer to that is, it's not, we have an obligation to, to ensure that there's a collective bargaining process so that the faculty voices are heard. And we really, or really can't discuss, you know, the substance of those until we've fulfilled our obligations and those are done. So it's frustrating, but we really, I don't think, are able to go legally into any depth there. He also asked, if the teachers come back and say they are not on board with the hybrid model, does that mean we'll have to be 100% virtual at CPCS indefinitely? I, I, I would just say at this point, we're, we're still fulfilling our collective bargaining obligations and we really don't know what their position is going to be. So to really speculate about that would be, I, I think, imprudent of us at this point in time. Do you have anything to add to that? Anyone? Okay, moving on. I received a question from Ms. Jessica DiLorenzo of 132 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. She asks, what are you waiting to vote on? The plan was due last Friday to Desi with details on all aspects of the plan. So I am confused on what you were waiting to vote on. Thank you. So Mr. Lorenzo, I think that, you know, I'm sure your frustration is felt by, by many, many people. So, Mr. Lorenzo, I think that, you know, I'm sure your frustration is felt by, by many, many people. I guess, and please, members of the committee, I'm just sort of being the, the, the sort of voice box here, but, but feel free to jump in. I, I think the main reason is, is, you know, we have collective bargaining obligations to fulfill. And we haven't arrived at a point where, you know, we feel that we're in a position to vote yet, given the posture of those ongoing negotiations. The other issue, it's twofold, I think, from my perspective anyway, personally, and I don't speak for the committee. I speak for myself as a member. But we, I think we really learned from the experience with the school start time issue that was addressed last year. And I think one lesson that at least I individually learned was we want to ensure that we have absolutely exhausted all possibilities of, of, you know, and, and opportunities for public discourse and notice on any major decision before it is made. So that we're not in a position where any members of the community feel like they weren't aware of what was going on, they didn't have the details, and they weren't part of the process. So the way we have answered that concern in this particular situation, which is probably the most impactful decision that has been made surrounding the schools, as long as, you know, I, public school systems since I can remember. We have obviously kept in constant communication generally with the community. We have set up individual family forums with each school building to discuss the details of each building and the prospects of various reentry plans. And we have had a full school committee meeting two weeks ago on August 5th, I believe it was, where we discussed it and had our preliminary vote on the draft, which was noted would not be the final version. We will have another meeting tonight, we're having right now, where we're discussing it and answering these questions. Everyone's voices are heard, and then we're waiting until next week, which will be a special meeting because we ordinarily meet every other week. But next week, because we understand the time is of the essence, we're not going to wait two weeks, just one week. And then we will finally vote on the plan. And at that point, I think all of us will be comfortable with the, with the position that every member of the community was adequately brought into this discussion. Any members of the committee have anything else to add to that point? Okay, I don't see any. So I'll move on. The second question is from Ms. Jessica DiLorenzo, again, again, of 132 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. What community reasons you speak about were used as a basis for this change? I still don't understand why a change for CHS when the plan to DESI was just submitted days ago. So she, I think that this question was submitted, Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins, when we were discussing the shift in the cohort structure for the high school. So maybe you could provide an answer to that?
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate the question. The, you know, the shift is really twofold. One is that we believe it better attenuates for, from the feedback we are receiving to childcare situations and keeping things as consistent as possible. And secondly, if we are not able to successfully negotiate our position of having full synchronous learning happening for students at the middle and high school in the off week, the, the, the time where they're more connected during one week is, is more important, and that model shifts quite a bit. So, you know, we're kind of moving to what I think is, in, in many cases, a better model just on its face. But with all those factors, with that factor about how, how we're going to land with the association considered, I think is a much more appropriate model to, to put in place in case we can't do that. And I want to, the whole goal is to try to give people as much notice as possible and to create the best model as possible as soon as we can for folks. And, you know, this is part of the deal when you're, when you're bargaining a plan that you have to have in before you're able to bargain. I mean, it's just, it's just a fact of life that you're going to make some shifts as you, if that's the case. It's not a, a great position to be in, but like every, every place else in Massachusetts, we're in that same position, and that's where the change came from. Craig, you on me?
Anyone have anything to add? Okay, if not, moving on. The next set of questions are, are from Mr. Gary Cohen and, and his wife. And they live at, I'm just scrolling down here, 27 Cedar Street.
Yep.
This is a sort of lengthy question, and, and Mr. Cohen, you'll, you'll be the unfortunate example, the first person. I don't want to silence or restrict anyone, but it is a little bit difficult in this form. I'm going to, I'm going, we're going to read this and respond, and I know everyone wants their voice heard, and that is absolutely what we want. But, but if I could get people to sort of make, make their comments as concise as possible, I don't want to restrict, but, but just, it's, it's very difficult because I think, you know, I have to read a few different frames here and scroll down. It's a little bit difficult in this form, and that's the only thing that I would ask. But, but here, here is, I think it's a combination of a statement and some questions. My name is Gary Cohen. My wife and I have two children entering sixth and 10th grade. We would like to respectfully address a few concerns surrounding the remote-only option, which was only briefly addressed in the committee's letter and which currently gives us great trepidation. We are interested in choosing a remote-only option to start the year, and were initially led to believe this would be offered within the Cohasset system, going virtual with Cohasset teachers and classmates during the remote week from home. We also thought that by opting out of in-person study, we are actually being helpful to the community by providing more in-person spaces for those families that need them. The very recent suggestion to outsource the remote-only option to the statewide Connections Academy, or TECA, makes us feel like those desire remote-only option are literally being kicked out of our school committee, community, excuse me. We are also, we also feel we are being forced to make an irreversible decision under duress. We also feel, oh.
It's 19 hours.
He just continued that comment, I'm sorry, in the, in the next post. So we also feel we are being forced to make an irreversible decision under duress with minimal information provided on the specifics of the program. Our concerns are as follows. Upon calling TECA for more details, we were informed this is not the long-established TECA program that the administration is endorsing. This would be a totally new program being assembled in the last weeks to accommodate Massachusetts districts using this option for their remote students. As such, we have little confidence that this program will truly be ready to start by their stated September 1st start date. Or will there be, or will be of the same quality of their legacy online offering or of the quality of the Cohasset public schools? So I think I'd stop right there so you can respond to that, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scollins, before I move on to his other few questions.
Yeah, I mean, and I have, and these are great, these are great questions, and I have spoken individually with Mr. Cohen. And I appreciate, appreciate it because it's probably questions of other folks, too. You know, really, right now, with the information we have, TECA, it is the TECA program. I, you know, I, one of the things, I don't know who you spoke with at TECA, but we have a contact that we have provided for you, Mr. Cohen, and will provide that contact for anybody to get a little more information that's accurate about the program. You know, i- is it increasing? Yes, it's, it's certainly growing because it's a, it's an option that was presented by the state. Remember, remember, TECA has been around since 2004. It has Massachusetts-certified teachers, follows the same curriculum standards as everyone. It, it does, and it's, it's based for Olympians, skiers, folks who are not necessarily able to attend a traditional school. There's other reasons that people would be in that as well. But it provides a robust remote learning model that's been worked out over, you know, a good part of 16 years to include synchronous and asynchronous learning. The, the question about kind of feeling that it was short timing. Well, all of this unfortunately is short timing. I mean, everything is a bit, it feels a bit rushed to me because of the necessity to, to, to get back into school. The, the need for that and the ability to have to be nimble and, and turn on a dime with information that we've been given, as I exemplified by the information I just told you about. There were some pretty big changes here at the 11th hour. So we, I respectfully understand that, but, you know, it's what the hand we've been dealt. And as I've said before, right now, there is not a viable option for us to be able to create because I can't guarantee we're going to be able to do that synchronous learning that we had hoped to do because of what we're hearing from our association, for one. And secondly, I, I, I don't believe we're going to have the amount of students that would allow us to use some, some staff who we don't know about. We don't have any information on staff to create the remote learning programming. So back to TECA, it's a viable, tried and true learning platform that we do believe will offer a solution for students who are moving away from our subscribed hybrid model. And I respect that, and I, but in terms of the commitment, which was also addressed in that part of the question, the, the semester goes through the 25th of January. And it would not be wise to be setting up a situation where students can come in and out of a program like this. And I, for continuity purposes, not only for the student who's in TECA and would be coming out, but for the classroom whom he or she would be going into. We know, we have to be insistent that there's a commitment in this regard. And I should say, at the high school, because of our semesterized model, it's, it's even a longer commitment. So we do take it seriously. We do believe it is a viable model. We've vetted it. And we also believe that it could be our only model and certainly our best model. So that's really where I'm coming from with that, but I know he probably has some more questions, which I'll be glad to, to answer.
Can I interject for one second?
Sure.
When I was able to participate in the presentation that DESI did about the remote learning options that they recommended, I, my first question that I didn't ask, because many other people asked it, was how they would have the ability to take on more students from around the state. I didn't understand how that would work logistically. And so other people in that call did ask that question of the superintendent, and he assured us that they would be able to scale up to accommodate these new students. And so, I mean, I, for me personally, I mean, I, I think that we're all doing the best that we can with what we've got, and what we've got is a difficult situation. The, the best that I personally would expect is the superintendent of an established learning platform to reassure me that they would be able to scale up their operation that they know to accommodate new students. And so I just, I, I don't say that as me personally endorsing TECA. I don't have a direct experience with them, but I just thought it important to say that I also heard that directly from the superintendent and, and felt like that was relevant.
Thank you, Ashley. I know, Dr. Scollins, you've had communications with the superintendent that go beyond mine, so, look, if you have anything to add with that.
I have. I did ask that same question because I was curious also, and there was some concern around previous caps, because there are caps when it comes to the virtual schools, but those have been released by DESI. And I specifically asked, so how are you going to do this? And he said, you know, well, we have a lot of teachers out there that are looking for jobs, and we have a really good training program, and we have a very strong model for how you deliver instruction in a virtual world. It is different. But he said, we have great teachers and we're going to be able to do it. And his enthusiasm was a bit contagious, I have to say. I really enjoyed my conversation with him, and anytime I reached out with him, to him, he gets back to me very quickly. So he understands that time is of the essence. He understands that there are a lot of questions. He, like Dr. Sullivan said, he's given us a contact so that we have one person that people can go to for Cohasset. I think that's really nice because I, I'm sure they have other, lots of representatives. And, and, you know, when you talk to one person, you may get a slightly different information, and that's just because of how people deliver information. So I think having one person will be really terrific. So please reach out to me, email me, and I will connect you with that person at TECA.
And, and you know, TECA is really a good model for a small district like ours that doesn't have the resources to create these other, I, I mean, I've talked to superintendents of, of like-sized districts, and that's where we are. It's a, it's a difficult situation, but this is a, is a good, a good model for that because of where we are.
Okay, a lot to cover here. So, Mr. Cohen continues, "We feel we are being asked to make a decision with few details provided until after we have committed. We have no information on course selection slash availability or whether reentry will look like, or what reentry will look like if classes do not correspond. As one example, AP courses our high school-aged daughter is supposed to take this year do not look available on the TECA website."
Yeah, well, I mean, I, like, I've already given Mr. Cohen, and I would give anyone who's asking, you know, asking about the program, information for a, a contact. I know, I basically sent him that Dr. Scollins would be in touch, but we know the person's name, Van Marie. We've talked to her, so we're, we're ready. I think you're going to get some good information, and it'll really help you make an informed decision. And we'd offer that to anyone to give more information about everything asked on this question. It's a good one.
Perfect. He goes on to ask, we, our state, we also have not been provided with any information on exactly how many slash what percentage of Cohasset students are potentially opting into a remote-only option. Will our students be the only ones, or will they be in a small or large cohort of their classmates?
So I don't believe that's the way TECA would break it up. You may have some students, but again, we're, as I mentioned, we're going to end up resting between 60 and 70 students at, at the max. And that isn't a lot, if you think about it, and it's pretty much evenly spread out throughout the whole district. So per school, so we're talking very few. And it is, you know, so I don't know, Dr. Scollins, do you have any information? I mean, there's a chance, but.
Yeah, and it could happen, but, you know, again, it's asynchronous and synchronous, so it will have a slightly different feel than a traditional classroom. So I understand the desire to be with other students from Cohasset, but I'm not necessarily sure it's going to align that way. And again, you know, some of this is, you know, self-paced within the day. So it's a little bit different than being live all day, you know, in classes. So that's not exactly the model that exists for virtual learning.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, "Despite the above reservations, we have been told we need to make a final decision in the next two days. And our decision is binding for at least the first half of the year for our younger child and for the entire year for our high school child. For example, if the Cohasset school system reverses course and goes all remote by September 22nd, it is inconceivable to us that we are literally blocked out of returning to our own school district in time for its start date. We are open to exploring TECA, but would ask the school committee to make some provision that students may return under a few circumstances if overall plans significantly change or if the TECA program turns out to be a disastrous, or excuse me, be disastrous for particular children. We understand this is a budget issue. However, our understanding is that the cost per semester of TECA is extremely low, in parentheses, $1,500 per semester, and should not be the sole determination of an irrevocable, irrevocable decision. To sum up, we would urge the school committee to reconsider this part of the plan, to find a way to work with teachers and approve the initial plan of allowing remote-only students to remain with their classmates in the Cohasset curriculum, simply zooming in from home, to this, to the extent that is not workable. We would urge the administration to provide assurances that if upon trying TECA, we decide it doesn't work for our children, we will be able to return to the Cohasset system. Thank you."
Okay, well, so, yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to work out all the plans with the association. But again, we're getting close to our start school here, and that is a, that is an obstacle. I will say, you know, we, we've always looked at every individual student, and we've tried to help every individual based on their needs and where they are. But I think everyone can, and will imagine, we're going to handle this in that, in that way as best we can. But, you know, there are, there, as I mentioned before, there are not just financial considerations here. There are also continuancy of learning considerations for the students in the program and students who we have in the classrooms with very strict restriction, real, very, there's restrictions around the amount of students we can have in those rooms. And we're setting up our cohorts in that regard and our classes in that regard. So, you know, we, we will pledge to always work with individual students and to try to make the right decisions. But I don't want to mislead folks by offering a program in a, in a way that isn't sincerely presented to where our objectives are with the learning needs of all of our students. That's what I'm trying to do.
And can I say another thing? And I understand that point of if we start remote, but our goal is to go into hybrid. So if you, you know, if you didn't go into TECA, and you went into a remote and we go to hybrid, TECA may not exist. So like it's, so I guess that's kind of something you need to be thinking about. You can't go in and out of TECA. It doesn't work that way.
We can't have that. That won't work and
Doesn't work, yeah.
Not gonna work.
Okay, moving on, a question from Cindy Swartwood of 348 South Main Street. What if I don't choose TECA, but my family situation changes and I need my student to go completely remote, even if the school year is hybrid?
Yeah, those situations we'll attend to and we'll have to figure out something for them again. We would, it would depend on the, this is one of those individualized questions because clearly there are some situations that will come up when there's a protocol for students to be out for a certain amount of time. And we would then follow that, provide them with the work needed and then bring them back into the hybrid or whatever model we were being at that point. It's sort of too individualized, the question for me to be able to answer. But we would work with every individual to provide what was appropriate for them as they tried to get back into our hybrid situation ideally.
Thank you. Next question is from Jen, no last name or address noted. They ask if there is a holiday during the week, are the students still allowed to in person days per week? When you were starting with only eight in person days per month, and then if a holiday falls and then if a holiday falls, they will have only one day per week. That will disengage any student.
Yeah, I mean, we are bound by, you know, the amount of days we have in a week. And we do have certain holidays that do, they do dictate things. One thing I will add, and I'm not skirting the question, but I just, it's on my mind right now, is we are going to be advocating for some some shifts in our professional development calendar because we're going to have to balance out those days. And that will be coming and will be part of the voted on plan next week. We've already figured them. There's just some shifting, just to make it equitable across the across the board. But yeah, I mean, that is, I don't really think I can give this question a great answer because the holidays are going to be there. The professional development days as of right now are going to be there. We're trying to maximize as much in person time as possible. And I guess the hope is that we get to a position where these social distancing distancing restrictions aren't aren't on us and we're able to bring more people back with less social distancing. If that comes about, you know, we're going to have a lot more in person. But until that does, you know, this is, this is where we will be.
Okay, moving on, Mr. Robert Jeffers of 18 Spring Street asks, with the new schedule, will Cohasset High School now have all five classes every day?
So I put that up there on the on the screen. I believe yes, I believe there are all five days, five classes. And there's a, there's an arrangement for that. So the answer is yes.
Okay, next, Ms. Christina Quinn from 23 Parker Ave asks, if schools need to be shut down, will the current proposed hybrid model be able to transition to a fully remote one? Simple answer to that one as well, I think.
Yes, it will. And you know, we would, we're not using the word shut down anymore. We're using transitioning to a remote model. Of course, but I hear you. I said shut down for a while and I keep correcting myself. It's not, it's just shifting to a remote model. But yeah, we would, we would shift and it's explained in the plan how we do that. We'd basically stick with the model we have at the elementary. It's just that those in person moments would go more synchronous remote in that hybrid. The Wednesdays would stay the same, except it would shift a bit in terms of who's instructing what. And that's all in the plan and the the middle and high school would shift to more, at this point, more of a synchronous delivery of lessons remotely. So the idea would be, students would be walking through the schedule. The commissioner had a call today and he was very adamant about the fact that schools that shift to remote only and when we shift to remote only, these are new standards. I've used this term many times. The spring was pandemic learning. This is truly remote learning. You know, we're going to have an expectation for attendance. The commissioner did say they'd be coming out with what that is and even more specifics about what the rigor has to live up to in terms of remote learning. We're going to meet that. It's going to be much more robust communication within the remote format, knowing that, you know, good remote learning isn't just sitting a kid in front of a computer for six hours. There, there's asynchronous and synchronous activities. There's taped lessons. There's a whole back and forth that we're going to be training our teachers on more in depthly in the weeks to come.
Okay, thank you. Next question is from Leanne Blackman of 2266 South Main Street. As both CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommend that all students wear cloth face coverings in parenthesis and be taught and reinforced the use of such coverings, end parenthesis. Are there any plans to expand the mask policy to all students in order to mitigate the risk of spread and give us a better chance of going to school longer? I will answer that one as we have in a few agenda items. There's a vote on a proposed mask policy that is going to recommend just that. So stay tuned and there'll be discussion on that. Moving on, Ms. Erin Gillis of 720 Jerusalem Road asks, can you provide any information on what the threshold is for closing schools back down? Presuming it comes from the state, have they shared that information with the district?
Could you repeat that, just the end of it? I'm sorry.
Yep, let me unmute myself and go to the answered section here. Hold on a second.
Well, I guess I can do that.
Nope, that's fine. Can you provide any information on what the threshold is for closing schools back down? Presuming it comes from the state, have they shared that information with the district?
They have, and I actually shared that with the community on, and this is, now I should be clear on what this is. There are metrics that have been delivered from the from the governor, but actually they're from the Department of Public Health and they've been endorsed by the DESE. And what they look at is testing within 100,000 people. And what they look at is the percent positive within the 100,000. Because they figure that what they're doing is they're estimating folks who would not have been tested and would have been tested by thinking about that. And they've created a metric that codes them within red, green, red, yellow, green, I should go through this. Red is they're recommending remote. And you can get that fairly quickly in a small district because it ends up being like a cell of folks who who end up, you know, hotspot or something that pumps up. Hall actually is in the red or they were, they had been in the red, just so folks know. And it's just a matter of a few individuals. We haven't had an individual, knock on wood, who's tested positive in over 14 days. I believe it's almost three weeks. So we're, we're in a different category, but that's the red. The yellow is a slightly more, less cautious, but still remote model. And then you move into what's called the green, which is a place where they believe you can come back in hybrid. Potentially full, full in person. And then finally, you have, you know, where we are in the unshaded, which is no, no person or I think it's one within a 14 day period has tested positive. And they're calculating that within all of this as, as leading to a position of people coming back in in full person if they can. But of course, the circumstances for us is that we can't because of the space factors in our schools fit everybody. So thus we're coming back in a, in a hybrid model. Is my sound off, Mike? That's fine. I know I'm speaking, but I just, I feel like I'm this delay and I just, it's driving me crazy. I won't look at myself. I'll look at you. So I hope that answers the question. And I did send out those metrics on Friday. And, you know, I'll be glad to to share that with any individual who wants to send an email to me. I'll give it right to them.
Okay, moving on, Mr. Ken Balazs, B A L A Z S, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Asks, I do not have an address. He asks, is the town of Cohasset charged per student or family for registration slash access to the TECA learning program? If so, how much is the cost?
How much is the cost of the TECA learning program?
Yes.
I believe the Mr. Cohen was accurate. I think it's in, it's in that that range per semester. And then, of course, if you go to a year long program, which we have to think about, there are some of our students at the elementary may want to stay in there for the year. We have to multiply that by two. So we're, and that would be the case for high school students. So yeah, that's, Mr. Cohen was accurate.
Okay, if the school model is forced to become fully remote learning, has the administration already adjusted their pedagogy and prepared a curriculum? I think we've already answered that question.
Yes.
Are the costs associated with these learning programs able to be deducted from the special education fund?
That's interesting. No, we haven't. We haven't looked at that. I don't believe so. I mean, we're looking at our reentry grant monies as playing a role in that.
Mrs. Mara seems to have response. She's, she was the former chairperson, has a lot of knowledge regarding veterinary items. Mara, do you have any insight into that?
If they're referring to this, our special education reserve fund that we have set up with the town, I don't believe so unless the student is on an IEP or 504 or has some kind of accommodation and those are unanticipated expenses that we didn't know as of our June budget vote. So I assume that that's what this, what Ken is asking.
I think he is. I think you're right. Moving on. Mr. Mike Riley asks, I do not have an address, Mr. Riley, what are the guidelines for quarantines? For example, if a student in the class tests positive, if a family member of a student in the class tests positive, when will tests be required? Will parents be notified when students test positive? If a teacher has symptoms or tests positive, will a substitute be used? Who does not necessarily have expertise in the subject or will they teach remotely from home? So I think you probably already, when you're speaking of the additional guidance that came in, sort of addressed the first half of this, but
Yeah.
I don't know if there's something you want to add.
Well, you know, I, I'm not going to profess to know every single protocol by heart yet. I'm sure I will. But they're all there for you in the, in the roadmap. If you go in under the considerations, the safety considerations for COVID-19, there are multiple scenarios that are played out and the ones you mentioned are, I believe, are amongst them. You know, clearly, we're, we're always, and I say this, there, you know, there are some common features to every situation which involves, you know, making sure we safely move a student who might have that or a staff member who might have a symptom, I should say, in an area, cleaning the areas. And then right away, working with our lead nurse to inform our public health agent. As they Mary Goodwin is our public health agent, who's our, our town nurse and Pam Fahy, working with them. And then, you know, they, they follow their protocols in terms of communicating and let us know what we can and can say, can and can't say in regards to HIPAA, which goes right there with FERVA in terms of our need to keep privacy intact. So it's really spelled out for us. We're operationalizing it. We're going to train people, nurses in those protocols. Already, Mary Goodwin has met with them. I know we'll do a lot more of that. And, you know, we'll be ready to attend to all of that. But I would definitely say, take a look at those protocols because they'll, they'll give you some answers.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Moving on, Mr. Riley also asked, this is a final sort of part of his question. Will teachers be able to have after school sessions with students?
Yeah, there's, there's no reason they can't have after school sessions. There's no reason we can't have before school sessions. We just have to keep the masks on as indicated and voted on by the school committee, whatever that may be. And socially distanced and follow all our protocols.
And obviously, and obviously Marshall does in a way that, you know, everyone isn't seeking to supplement the hybrid with, you know, after or before school. So if everyone starts doing that, obviously the teachers become overwhelmed. It's not, you know, logistically feasible.
Yeah, and all of it is in line with the teacher's contract and their ability to make those decisions within the contract. I didn't want to, you know, leave that out. But just in theory, yes, of course.
Next, Ms. Sarah Norman, I do not have an address, asks, has anyone thought about the risk of bringing kids from high, high risk areas into our low risk community?
I, I'm a little bit unsure about the, oh, I mean, if we're talking about our Boston students, I guess, if that's what that is referring to.
I said maybe. I don't know what other students.
I'm just trying to think of hybrid because we're all in a very small community.
We're talking about, maybe Mrs. Norman can clarify and we can get to that question later.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I guess I'm trying, I'm just trying to think aloud what.
I think it makes sense not to speculate. I think that's a good point. Mrs. Caleri will do that. So, Ms. Norman, if you could just simply specify, we'll get to the question again in a bit because we're not really sure what you're asking.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, Ms. Jessica DiLorenzo of 132 Chief Justice Cushing Highway asks, are MECO students being considered for the high needs cohort for four day in person learning?
Well, they would be considered based on their needs. You know, if they, if they had, if they had high needs, just like any other student, they would certainly be considered for that. Our director of student services, Barbara Sowalka, and her team are really working on communicating with families to determine who is going to be in that group. So yes, they would.
Okay, moving on, Ken Balazs, again, B A L A Z S, I'm so sorry, Ken, that I'm butchering your name. If anyone knows how to pronounce it on the committee, please feel free to correct me. Announcement was made today that flu vaccines are required for admittance to schools this year. Is there expectation that vaccine or COVID-19, if approved and distributed within the current school year, will also be required for admittance?
So it's not, I want to, want to, and this is really hot off the press, so I haven't studied it deeply. But it's, it's actually, it says, you know, I'll read right from the guidance. Which students need to receive influenza vaccine? Students in kindergarten through grade 12 will be required to receive influenza vaccine for the current influenza season for school attendance unless they have a medical or religious exemption. When do students need to receive the influenza vaccine? Students must receive influenza vaccine for the current season by December 31, 2020. Are there exemptions? Yes, medical and religious exemptions are allowable in the state of Massachusetts. What type of influenza vaccine can students receive? Any age appropriate licensed influenza vaccine for the current season fills the requirement. This includes injectable and nasal spray vaccine types. Anyway, it goes on, but.
So Dr. Sullivan, I think we can certainly post that vaccine policy that you're reading from. And as far as COVID-19 vaccine goes, I mean, we have no idea that, that, that we haven't, there is no vaccine yet. So I think it would be speculative as to what the policy would be, but I would imagine, you know, it would be beneficial to have people take that, but that's speculative at this point. So I think he was asking about COVID-19 vaccine in particular. We'll post that other information you're just reading from, just to sort of save time because we have a lot to address here.
Yeah.
Let's see. Sarah Norman asks also, what about teachers from high risk areas? Is that a concern? I have heard other districts are discussing this.
No, that hasn't been brought up in our conversations about a concern where someone lives coming into to our community. You know, we're, we're not at, I mean, we have people from Hall, for instance, coming into Cohasset. I mean, so you have, I mean, there are, there, we're not like really knocking down our borders to that, to that regard. No, that extent. So no, the answer to your question, which I probably should have just said, no, no.
Moving on, Ms. Cindy Swartwood of 348 South Main Street asks, was there any consideration to a plan like holding one day a week per period in the high school? Period one on Mondays, two on Tuesdays, and so on. School could be held in morning before lunch. Kids could eat at home. Teachers would have the afternoon to prep for virtual.
So we, we considered so many plans and options, including the, you know, the AMPM kindergarten model was what I was calling it because of what I was used to where they had students come in the morning, students come in the afternoon. There, everything was predicated for us by safety and by the, the amount of in person learning that we can try to, to put together. And our initial plans were, were created with those in mind. And even as we make adjustments, we're still very much keeping those in mind. So lunch is a very valuable, important part of our school day. I just want to say that. I, I think we can do that very safely. The protocols we have in the plan allow for that. So we, for a variety of reasons, determined that plans such as that, and I know there was a lot of talk about a plan that was or is or was or may be considered in situ. And that plan, we, in any plan, we have to look at in regards to Um, and that plan, we, in any plan, we have to look at in regards to coacid. And we want to make sure that the plan that we adopt is very uniquely um, in touch with the needs uh, of, and resources, we, needs of our students and staff and families, and obviously our resources we have here. Uh, and obviously the priorities of safety, which include in this case, social distancing and cleaning. And then real quality learning are going to always be in the forefront of everything we do. So although that maybe individual recitation of a plan may not have been considered. Plans like that were, uh, and were, were not advocated for, for the reasons I just mentioned, which I would say applies to that plan.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, uh, Liz Bolu of 20 Cedar Acres uh, asks, concerned that if we bring in kids from high-risk areas, we are introducing risk into our low-risk community. All for the MEKO program, but can you comment if these programs are being assessed to put our community slash teachers slash students first and limit risk?
Do you want to speak or can I just say something?
You can always say something.
Um, MEKO students are our students. And I would say that we would, if, if we were going to consider a statement like this, we would also need to have kids whose parents work in Boston stay home every day.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I personally, I, I think that covers it, but I, um, MEKO students are in the fabric of who we are as a school system. I tell you, that's one of the main reasons I came to coacid public schools. And uh, you know, you're not going to hear me um, advocate for anything but what's the best for them. And thank you for saying that, Dr. Sullivan. Thank you, and uh, appreciate that, Ashley, as well.
You know, and I, you know, I, I, well. I, I understand because it has, it, it's, it's talking about, I understand that, that, you know, the concern here because, you know, I think that part of the reason that the state has delayed in a lot of their guidance is because they're probably reluctant to make any sort of overarching decisions for the entire state. I always equate it to a snow day. You don't declare statewide snow days because some towns get more accumulation than others. And the infectivity is different in, in from district to district, and that's probably one reason. And so I understand the concern here, and I don't want to dispel that as, you know, that person being insensitive. Um, but I think it is important to note that, you know, I think coacid stands, stands strong on the uh, point that Mrs. Colari raised earlier in that, uh, you know, the MEKO students. Um, while that community may differ in their infectivity, that, you know, wherever committee, the community they hail from may, may differ in their infectivity rates. MEKO students are coacid students, and we're very proud of that. And, and, you know, we have to uh, approach, I think, that issue from that perspective first. Um, but I, I understand the impetus behind that inquiry, and I don't want to, you know, sort of dispel it as being insensitive or anything.
No, and I, and I, I'm sure it's a technical question about um, regions and where, you know, how we're mitigating the disease. I just felt I needed to say that, but it's, I didn't want to dispel or, or, or just cast any dispersions on the.
I don't think I did. I was just being that clear. Moving on, uh, Ms. Uh, hold on a second. This thing's sort of difficult to deal with. All right, um, Ms. Kathy McManus, I do not have uh, an address. She asked, please, could you share the fully remote contingency plans with the community?
The fully remote contingency plan is.
I think what it means is if, if we have to move to fully remote from the hybrid model that we're currently, uh, we're currently improved.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, it's the level of specificity that I could go back to, if you'd like me to, the prezi.
I think what I would say is at the best, because that's, the, the answer could be long, and we don't know.
It will be long, yeah.
So I ask, uh, Ms. McManus to, to maybe contact you, Dr. Sullivan, and, and, or Dr. Stahl, and you, you could probably walk her through that. I'm in detail.
I would say, um, it, I, that's a great question, and I, we are refining it as more of the um, guidelines come our way. Just today, the commissioner said, I'm going to be giving you more guidelines on what I really mean by robust. That's going to help us. That's going to guide us. But I, what I would ask is that, um, if you take a look at the roadmap that we have posted on the website, it's right in the middle of, where, by announcements, you can click on it, um, and look at the roadmap. Uh, the contingencies under the building plans, or just look at the prezi and it will show you.
But please reach out to any.
Oh, yeah, and then reach out, or, or you can just reach out. That's fine, too.
Uh, moving on, uh, Ms. Kimberly McAdam, uh, she asks, can you provide any update on the plan for ventilation? Particularly at Deer Hill, in parentheses, no AC currently exists, close parenthesis. Will medical-grade filters be in each classroom or AC window units or another filtration system to meet safety protocols? Uh, she lives at 41 Pleasant Street.
Well, you know, operationally HVAC obviously is, is crucial and important here. We have done um, our due diligence in making sure uh, that we get the information from our uh, facilities team, who obviously is a town team that works here. Um, we are looking to try to give more reassurances on where we are with HVAC. There's the, you know, there's air conditioning, and then there's air ventilation. Uh, the guidance has windows open when at all possible to try to get airflow going through, which can be somewhat in contradiction with um, cooling a room. Now, I don't want to pro, propose that I'm an HVAC expert, quite the contrary. Um, but I would say, uh, and Craig, you know, certainly jump in here, but we're, we're looking to uh, get more of a independent assurance that we do have the appropriate HVAC. Uh, that we believe we do, and that we can increase what we need to. And the, the way we're moving is moving in the right direction. But we are certainly looking at uh, air cooling as well in the, uh, in Deer Hill. And looking at uh, the rooms that, you know, we're already doing some wiring in there. Uh, we're lucky that we have the beautiful Ozgood that has air conditioning everywhere, pretty much. Uh, we do have new air conditioning units going into our music rooms that were part of our capital approach. We have windows being fixed and at Deer Hill, they'll all be uh, upgraded and able to, to, to move up and down freely. So yeah, we're attending to all of it, but um, you know, the, the need to go further in the next few weeks, we realize is is something we're gonna, we're gonna be attending to.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Uh, Marina Gustafson asks, I do not have an address, asks, regarding students who are required to stay home and quarantine for 14 days, exposed to, exposed to a positive COVID peer. How will they be integrated into or make up the school? I'm sorry. I'm going to start over. Regarding students who are required to stay home and quarantine for 14 days, if exposed to a positive COVID peer. How will they be integrated into or make up the in-school learning that they will miss while at home?
Well, I mean, we, we always have, when we, when we have students who are out for longer periods of time, we always try to, to help those students. Um, sometimes if it's a long, long period, we can attend to them through a tutor. Um, and, you know, we're going to be looking at, at that as, and you can expect that they're going to get help. Uh, that we're going to try to get them in tune with the classes as much as we can. Here's what I'd say. We, we have these scenarios that happen every now and then. And never in the history, since I've been a teacher anyway, have we had more resources to provide that for the students. I mean, we are at a much higher level than we were this time last year to be able to attend to students who need to be um, educated in a remote fashion or to be provided assignments that link in with what's happening in the school day. So I would say much better than we ever have, for one. And then I think you can plan on us really attending to both the social emotional needs of the student. Uh, and trying to give them some individual care as well. And that might be a place we can, um, we can utilize some staffing uh, to, to help as well. So it's a really good thought, and it's one that we're, we're planning, but it's also one that I think we're ready to attend to better than we ever have.
Okay, um, the next question is from SV. Uh, it's just uh, two initials and I have no address. Um, the question is, what adjustments, if any, have been or will be made to the various schools' ventilation systems to maximize fresh air supply? Have any adjustments been made or will be made with regard to relative humidity inside the schools? Um, I think you basically spoke about that early, Dr. Sullivan. I mean, the short answer is that, yes, we're looking into the ventilation, ventilation systems and, and it's ongoing consideration in the overall calculation.
Yeah, I, I would, and as you saw in the roadmap, we're going to be really sensitive to heat index. You know, a, a heat day can be called if it's, if it's too hot, and then we'd switch to remote for that day. Um, we're, we're, we have to be really sensitive to the conditions that are, are factors. So yes.
Next question is from Caroline Norgot, um, N O R G E O T. I apologize for mispronouncing your last name, of 10 Sankey Road. For middle school and high school, I'm not clear on how the remote Wednesdays and other remote days will work.
Yeah, so the remote Wednesdays um, are going to be as synchronous as we can possibly make them. Uh, with independent work that it would be potentially have some asynchronous tapings of lessons provided, and then we'll sprinkle in our specialists as well. I mean, you can see I was attenuated at the um, elementary level. Um, and it, it'll have a, a similar constituency, but we're, we're really looking at ideally, and this is what we're shooting for. Uh, having those lessons live streamed and getting them as synchronous as possible. I just don't know if we're going to be there, but you can expect a robust learning model, just as we have at the elementary, uh, and we're not, you know, live streaming everything there. So um, we'll, we'll, we'll provide that. There are some tweaks that have to be made there, and some of that is bargaining contingent. Um, would you say that's fair, Darceau?
I believe you.
Okay.
Okay, um, next question, um, I think we've already discussed, Mr. James Malone, no address. Ha, I ask, has there been more consideration to make masks mandatory for all students, for students of all ages? Um, the answer is that there, there has been more consideration. That's consideration is coming later in this meeting. There's going to be approval policy to that effect. Um, uh, Ms. Elizabeth Moore of 15 Stockbridge Street asks. Since we are, we all agree in-person learning is best for elementary, can we have the opportunity to collaborate on solving the challenges you addressed regarding the AM and PM cohort? I believe they seem manageable as a community.
So, um, the, the issues with the AM PM cohort are, are, you know, there's a few, few big issues. One is transportation for, again, it's unique, everything is uniquely coacid here. We have eight buses in our fleet. We have two buses dedicated to our Boston students because we, of the restrictions, we can't share with situate because it's too many people on a bus, which was our plan. Even if we did have those two, it's not, it wouldn't help with this issue because we have unique bus stops um, that are set around um, where students live in those particular cohorts, those particular cohorts. And it would not allow for a possibility of being able to, within the AM PM schedule, to pick people up, I'm sorry, to drop kids off from the morning session. And then be able to pick up students who are at different bus stops. You can't pick them up simultaneously, so you basically have to reset the whole route and go do it again. Um, it would essentially amount to a doubling of our bus fleet in many ways. Uh, which right off the bat makes it not tenable. And then there are a series of other issues that are important for me as a leader of the schools when I'm looking at, you know, keeping kids safe. Um, we're not going to be able to fully attend to cleaning uh, in, in an hour of transition time. Uh, I, I defy anyone to do deep cleaning in that, in that time period. I wouldn't feel comfortable with my kid coming into another cohort. With, with not adequate time for, to prepare that cleaning of the buses. Even if we did magically have more buses, we're not going to be able to clean them between the two cohorts coming in. That, that's a, that's a serious consideration for us. You know, and the model doesn't attend to lunch, and we'd be giving students lunch uh, on the buses, and they have to wear their masks and asking them, you know, those kids who have been in class since you know, the morning to not touch their lunches. Um, that's a, a real management issue. It's an allergy issue. It's a, it's a serious issue because the kids have to take up their masks to eat, and they don't want them doing that. And then think of our Boston students. Our Boston students would have to be in one cohort only. If we don't have enough buses to supply that, we'd have to put them in one cohort, which just totally eliminates any equity in our scheduling. It's a major, major issue for us. And then, um, what are they going to do? They're going to take their, their lunches home? Um, and look longingly at it for over an hour. I mean, it just, this doesn't, it, it's just not a healthy situation for our kids. It, it, there are other issues, too. There's issues of learning, you know, that I, I have issue with. So I'm, I don't, I, I'll stop there because I think I answered the question, but.
I, I think you did, and I think that our statement answered the question yesterday that we, that we sent out. And I think that I'm sure committee members will have points of deliberation on that issue. It's, it's, it's a, I think, a it's an issue of great interest to the, to the community, and I think it'll be discussed at length. And it was also, I think, i- it was addressed in our statement that we sent out. So I'm going to move on. Um, Ms. Dawn Newell of 49 Walnut Hill Lane asks, how do you know there are only 60 to 70 people who want full remote learning? Is it based only on the number of people who signed up for TECA? Do you know if there are other people who would prefer full remote learning if it was done through the coacid school system?
Well, right now, we can't do it through this class of school system. So that's kind of my answer right now.
I think that the, the question is, if we were, like, if, if our proposal had been fully remote. Would more people be interested in that? I, I, I don't, I mean, I, I guess. Uh, maybe I, I think the question presupposes that we're able to offer both, which we can.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not hopeful that we're going to be able to do that. So uh, it's, it does presuppose that, and it would be um, conjectural for me to, to, to guess on that.
Okay, uh, moving on, a question from uh, Ms. Jen Miller of 11 River Road. I am disappointed and frustrated for our juniors and seniors only going to school eight days a month. This does not offer the support and connection they need for the next chapters in their life. Is there any way we can offer electives that you can do remotes, such as college essay writing? ACT prep, interview skills, rather than chorus, in parentheses, not very COVID. Comma, ceramics and gym, which are impossible to hold remote. I do not understand deep clean Wednesday, not necessary with the science. More school for them, exclamation mark.
Yeah, I, I would, I would argue a little, I mean, I get the fumite uh, thing and how it's not, you know, um, exchanged i- in that way as, as readily as, you know, through the aerosol dynamic, but um, I would, I, I would have been asked to clean in every way, and I, and I want to do that. As far as those very unique and thoughtful, you know, comments about scheduling, uh, you know, we'll certainly bring that back to Principal Scott and talk about that. I, I wouldn't want to relegate. I've been very clear on the fact that we educate the whole child, and um, I'm not about to i- in any way relegate our chorus and band and uh, fine arts and uh, theater teachers and all of those uh, important subjects to, to secondary status. I believe we can um, we, we can go forward with those in a safe way. Again, go, I'm back to like band, coacid students don't share instruments. There's a lot of, a lot of schools that do that. So there's some unique characteristics that I think uh, will, will allow us, our size helps us in this regard to spread out and to do some of those courses. But I don't want to dismiss it angrily because I do appreciate the thought of um, some unique offerings that uh, you know, we could certainly look at as we try to accommodate this very difficult learning situation.
Hey, moving on, um, Francis Gabriel of 3 Mendel Road asks, could you please expand on the restrictions, constraints with the association with synchronous learning that would prohibit full virtual learning at CPS? I don't think we've heard the exact issues. Thank you.
Well, um, Chair McClellan, how deeply you want me to get into that?
We can't. Uh, the, 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 the answer to that question, and I will, I will say that, I will say this. If I am a parent, I am wondering about that. It is, it is obviously an issue of, of great import of interest. However, we have legal obligations. We have uh, important collective bargaining uh, obligations that are in place for a reason to ensure that our teachers have a, have a, have an absolute, um, uh, you know, well-heard uh, voice. And a full representation on this very important issue, and it's important to us as a district that that voice is heard and that perspective is taken into consideration fully uh, before any final plan is voted on. And uh, it is not appropriate or proper to disclose any portion of the substance of those negotiations at that time, at this time. So any questions related to that will not, you will not, you prepare for disappointment because we're not going to be answering them with any degree of substance tonight. Uh, moving on, but I do appreciate the perspective, and I understand as a parent, I would want to know.
Yep.
Just give me one second. I'm just finding my place here. Okay, the next question is from Monique Armstrong of 255 Pond Street. Will the school calendar change for December, February and April vacation dates? And if so, when will the dates be finalized?
Well, so the, I mean, the school committee decides calendar, but the proposal isn't going to be changing those dates. We can shift around some of our professional development days to even out with our Monday holidays. Obviously, my goal is to even out the cohort days so that we have the same amount of in-person time. As for both, as much as I can. So that, those are the adjustments I was considering. And beyond that, you know, and they're all, they have to be negotiated, but also they're, they're really the purview of the school committee.
Ms. Sarah Dorb of 8 Don Street asks, has anyone thought about the risk of bringing students and teachers from high-risk areas into our low-risk community? I think we've already addressed that issue. It's been asked and imposed by, that question's imposed by numerous people already.
It's tough because you can't see who's posting the questions. So they don't know. So.
Well, I just can't see the substance of each question until I read it. I mean.
No, 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 I know. I'm just saying, just so folks know, like, it's not like people are intentionally repeating. They just.
Oh, no, no. I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy that there are questions here.
Yeah, no, me too.
Getting in the process. It's just no reason to repeat what we just already said.
Right, right, right.
Ms. Suzanne Thornton of 109 Nichols Road asks, is a copy of the new draft plan available? The old draft was sent out to families for review via email.
Yeah, the last draft that was sent out to families was sent out when we voted for it on August 7th, I believe. The new draft will, was it, is that wrong? Am I wrong about that date? I think it's right, August 7th, 3rd. The, the next draft will be voted on and, you know, I don't think it would be. I don't know. I mean, I would, I would do, I would do what the committee wants me to, but I, my thought is it's probably better for them to see the draft that's being, that's being voted on at this point. You know, I'm trying to explain all substantive changes as they come. And like, that's why I started today with the middle and high school change. Everything else is either just information that's come our way that I described.
I'll be able to provide you some guidance there, Dr. Sullivan. I'll bring that up in our deliberations on this issue in a few moments.
Thank you.
Sorry, some of these are just comments in support and.
I, you know, I just want to say I can sympathize with congressional hearing folks at this point. I'm just kidding.
I really do.
They're very important questions, but it's that process of answering them. It's got to get a little bleary.
Someone, someone posted, it's a, it's a handle, no name or address, says, thank you for your hard work.
It's nice. Thank you.
Karen McDowell of 1 Spin Drift Lane. Asks, will TECA students be able to access any coacid services like special ed services? Will TECA students have absolutely no official relationship to CPS?
Um, so yes, well, TECA, TECA, do you want to answer that, Leslie? You might do a better job.
Sure. So TECA has their own special education, teachers and therapists and specialists. So they would handle it if you're in the remote learning. But certainly that would be dealt with through our Director of Student Services, Barbara Solanka and our team chairs. But yeah, so they do have services. So we, we wouldn't be providing them. And then your question along, are, are they removed from, from the coacid schools? So in essence, they are in their own school for the time that they are in there. When it comes to a daily interaction with other students.
So, but I would correct them just that they are coacid students. So they'd be eligible to play sports, eligible to do clubs, activities after school. All of that would be, would be allowed. So they're, they're absolutely, you know, coacid students. But from a, from a learning platform perspective, you're correct. So, so for that, thank you.
So that's for clarification.
Great. Thank you so much. The next question is from Matt Herndon. He asks, are you open to use? Are you open to using, excuse me, are you open to the use of outdoor space for class into the fall to mitigate the risk of transmission? And he gives examples of tents and folding chairs. I think there's a short answer to that question, correct?
The answer is yes. I mean, we have tents that have been ordered and are being set up. We're absolutely going to use outdoor space. We have some very, I think, out of the box ideas about how do you utilize tarps at, at Osgood? Because of the dynamics of the roof, if you can get my drift in the back. I think we're going to be able to do some very unique things, but you know, the, the weather is, I know a few people have told me that they lived in Massachusetts for a long time and eight months of it aren't that good in terms of weather. So it is certainly, you know, a short-term, maybe not a long-term thing, but we're going to use outdoor space whenever we can. There's a whole band of research that says how important that is anyway, to get kids outside, to get them fresh air. It's going to be good for them. So we're going to do that and it certainly helps in these situations.
Okay, is from Megan Warski of 11 Sankey Road. She asked, with synchronous learning and recording, how will you address FERPA? Will students in the classroom be recorded for their remote peers and their parents to watch comments and behaviors? Or will only the teacher be recorded? And in answering this question, Dr. Sullivan or Dr. Scholes, can you just explain what FERPA is? Because I think that maybe, you know, this person's more familiar with education than maybe some laypeople maybe.
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Scholes. You can, you can take it from a academic.
So FERPA is what we must adhere to in order to keep everyone's privacy. It's right. So, so therefore we have to be really careful about what we do and how we keep everybody's information private. So to answer your question around recording, yes, it would really be the teacher that's recording. It could just be the whiteboard or something along those lines. But again, we're working on all of those pieces, but we wouldn't necessarily record students. I think that's what you're asking.
FERPA is what there's the Free, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
Right, thank you.
One of those acronyms that you don't necessarily know off the top of your head.
You know, there's, yeah.
We live in acronym soup here in schools as people know, but it really is. Yeah, those are good questions and you know, those are some of the things we're talking through and, and, and working on. You know, we're, we're not really interested in recording lessons. That's not, not what we want, but we do want, you know, we'd like to have some opportunities for more connectivity. And that's what we're looking at, connectivity for students.
Next question is from Rob Johnson of 27 Linden Circle. If we do need to move all, to all remote learning, are steps being taken to assure that every student has a similar consistent experience? I know that last spring, different students got different levels of direct teaching time depending on who their teacher was and what demands their teachers had on their time outside of school. And he gives the example of teachers with a working spouse and young children spent much less time with their students than teachers who did not have these demands.
Yes. So, and that is, you know, part of our bargaining obligation is to make sure that we're able to articulate expectations to our staff in terms of time working on a remote fashion are clearly, we've, I've said this several times, even in this discussion, it's going to be more robust. It's going to mirror the school day and more so. And we do believe that our models and themselves and our experience from the spring will make things more consistent and robust. And yeah, so you can expect that. It was really hard in the spring and I can totally understand where we, where you're coming from with that. I think our teachers worked really hard and it was just a very different situation than where we are now.
We also have professional development that's going to help with that. So people, so teachers will have the same kind of.
Leslie froze.
Uh-oh. All right, well, we'll move on and if she, oh, there she is. She's back.
Back, okay.
We lost you at, the teachers are going to have the same type of professional development.
Oh, and so, you know, having all that kind of professional development will allow teachers to, to create more consistent models in how they deliver their instruction.
An important point. Thank you, Dr. Scholes. Our next question is from Ms. Emily Moore of 26 Fernway. Do you know how situates overcoming the bus and cleaning issues for half-day cohorts?
Well, situates twice the amount of buses we do.
So that's a simple answer to that in, in terms of cleaning. That's a good question. Next question is from Gene Dipold, D I P P O L D of 93 South Main Street. Thank you all for your hard work on the reentry issues. No easy answers. One logistic question, one question on fairness. Will the professional development days be on days when the kids are remote?
So we're looking to mix them. To even them out. That, that was the idea and, you know, it was, it was brought to my attention by some, some, some families and parents that there was some inequity and I had, I had noticed that they were accurate in that. So we.
I think that's a great example, Dr. Sullivan, of one of those points where the community communicated with you and that was one of those things that was taken into perspective in developing the plan.
Oh, absolutely.
The next, her next question, this is her fairness question. The Cohen's request relating to TECA seems fair and reasonable. For children that may have no choice but for remote, in parentheses, TECA, for health and other reasons, to not allow them to return to class at schools if it goes fully remote seems unfair and has potential disparate impact on these kids that may have no choice, including because of their health status. Their return to classes could be like kids moving to school and entering classrooms. What are the school committee's thoughts on the Cohen's request? A child that starts in TECA can return to coacid, particularly if it goes fully remote?
Yeah, I would, well, just to clarify, my, my stance first of all is like, you know, we're trying to set up a program and we're trying to set up both learning platforms and try to keep it the integrity of it. But we're going to work with every single individual and what they need. But I don't want to, you know, set up a scenario where we, we're advocating for having people coming in or out. I know that's very different than saying you can't leave. But I have to say, you know, we, there are times when you do need to have commitment in things if, if it's going to work. And I believe this is on the face of it, something we're asking for commitment for, but that will never, you know, we're still going to work with individual families.
Okay, moving on and I'll raise.
I don't know if we want to hear from the school committee though. I just, I answered that. I'm not.
That's why I'm going to raise that in the deliberations. The school committee is going to deliberate in a few moments and I'll raise that so that we do address that. Because that was sort of addressed, excuse me, directed to the school committee. So I'm just trying to get through the questions though. There's been a lot. And, you know, I'm just trying to streamline this and keep a strong cadence here. Ms. Jessica DiLorenzo of 132 Chief Justice Cushing Highway asks, was there considerations to the emotional impact of high school age students being separated by alphabet, alphabet cohorts? The social impact of this pandemic and some social isolation at times should be considered into this model. High school age students being together as a grade should be considered and it doesn't appear that this has been considered. A one week on and one week off would allow for all students in one grade to be together. It appears that the live streaming association impact bargaining. It appears, it just appears that the live streaming association impact bargaining has been the reason for the change. Would appreciate more information about this change.
Well, again, I think it's, I think it's twofold. As I said, you know, we did hear a lot of input from families who wanted their middle and high school students on the same schedule. We believe that we can do it alphabetically, the scheduling. You know, so they're, they're still going to be in with members of their own grade. They just, I get the point is to be in with their whole grade. But there were some problems with that as well. You know, we were, we were going to have to spread them out across multiple classrooms in some cases. It was really going to rely on that synchronous delivery model. We were going to have to hire staff to come and be in, potentially to be in a room next door to where the teacher's teaching. So the students can see on their device so we can have supervision. It wasn't, we were trying and, and I stand by and I think Ms. DiLorenzo well articulated the reason that we were trying to do that. But as things become less certain and those factors still remain, that the popularity of that model for us in terms of what's best for kids starts to sway over. So it's not as simple as, you know, what's happening in our bargaining. There are other factors to consider and no model is perfect in this. And that's, that's one of the, the great tragedies in all this is we're trying to make what's best out of formats that aren't exactly what we want. So I hear everything you're saying. It's, it's a tough decision.
Next, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Next question is from Mr. Mike Riley. Again, he's asked a few questions in the past and he's provided his address. He did not provide it this time, which is fine. It's already in the record. Is it possible to keep a high school grade together instead of splitting cohorts alphabetical and still adapt the new hybrid model? I think we were just discussing that issue. So.
Yeah, it is, it is possible, but again, it's, it hinges on that synchronous ability. More so because we, in looking at the numbers, we can more easily fit kids in one room alphabetically than we can by grade level. And that is a, it's a real factor as you start to think about the possibility of not having that ability. So, you know, I got to be a realist and that does have some, some say in what we do.
Next question is from Ms. Kimberly McAdam, who's also provided her address in past, in connection with past questions that she's asked. When will you have a sample prototype of the remote learning plan coacid will use if we need to transition away from hybrid?
Well, we do, we do have a sample prototype and schedules in our, in our plan. Now granted, the, the, the model for full remote learning is, is a bit different because of our week on, week off switch to the two, one, two model or, you know, two and three, or however you want to look at it. But the, the tenants right now are the same, you know, that at the middle and high school, we're looking for that, that more synchronous delivery model. And if we have to shift that somewhat, we'll fill it more similar to what is at the elementary. And the elementary prototype is right there in the plan as well. So I encourage folks to take a look at that and at the request of the school committee, I'll go into it more if you'd like.
Her question continues to specify types of technology used, mix of independent or live classwork. What online curricula will be used for each grade, safer math, ELA? And breakdown of sessions per day that would be done independently versus live teaching via Zoom or another live platform.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need to give, one of the things I've said in my answers is we need to be, excuse me, more explicit with that. But we are also looking for some guidance from the top on that as well. So we're, we're, we're ready to move and some of that also has to do with our bargaining obligations. So there's, there, there are some, there are some spaces to be filled there for sure. Yeah, I appreciate the question, but we're just not quite there, although we do have our models, the framework of them. But some of those are very specific and some of those we've been able to fill, you know, in terms of particularly at the elementary level. But if the synchronous delivery model breaks down at our middle and high school, there's going to be more pieces we have to fill. Now, Leslie, you want to say anything on that?
I do think, you know, we are going to be Google Classroom K through 12. So we have that learning management system. So that will be helpful. We're training our teachers on how to build out from that. So everyone will be coming from, you know, at least the same knowledge base. Obviously some have more knowledge than others at this time. So, you know, we're looking at things like single sign-on for elementary and middle. We're in the process of creating that. So there are pieces that we're doing so that it will be easier and teachers will have more consistency across the board about some of those expectations and what we're providing. So hopefully that will help answer that question a little bit, but more will come as we, as we fine tune and as Dr. Sullivan says. And we, you know, finish our bargaining with the union and we'll be able to send things out.
And you can see from the elementary law model, like when, when folks are going to be live streaming, when morning meeting is going to happen? Who might take morning meeting on as a, as a synchronous delivery model? When we're going to be using programs like Lexia and Dreambox? So we do have some of it outlined there.
Question is again from Ken Balazs, B A L A Z S, 15 Ledwood Farm Drive. Isn't the entire district requiring an IEP at this time?
I don't understand that. I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure I do either. I think.
I'd like to help maybe if, some of these questions, by the way, I just should put out there that like, the questions are harder, the format's difficult. So if some of the questions, you know, maybe I answered it in a certain way, but that's really wasn't what you were asking. Please email me and Dr. Scholes individually and we'll be sure to answer you appropriately.
He did elaborate in another, the next entry here. My family considers, considers learning under the circumstances presented requires as much individual attention as possible to accommodate these challenges. My family considers considers learning under the circumstances presented requires as much individual attention as possible to accommodate these challenges. Excuse me, accommodate these challenging times presented by limited access to the classroom. So I think that's how he's, you know, waiting for an individualized education plan.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, an individual educational program involves a student with a disability. But I get the I get the idea. There's a that we do have to. And that's one of the things, you know, from a social emotional point of view, we're trying to individualize the needs of the students. I mentioned trauma and every one of them coming in with a little bit of a different, you know, some is a small T and some is a capital T in trauma. And we have to deal with what those students are presenting to us and be ready to do that. And I know that's something important for our staff and certainly important for us. And I know the families want it.
Next question is again from Mr. Mike Riley. The CC states, the state metrics for mandating full remote seem low and very likely it will happen with only eight, maybe he meant eight percent population of 100,000 people. I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm maybe I'm misreading the question. Am I interpreting that correctly? And does that mean by logic that a town of our size would only need one case to move to remote?
Not one case, but it wouldn't be a tremendous amount of cases either. Because it is estimated within those who are tested and not tested, it's total percent of of positive cases. So he's not wrong in that it doesn't take a lot for a small town to move into a a zone of that. And that's why, you know, we all have to work really hard to try to keep our our community the way it is right now, which is in the unshaded section.
He follows up with the inquiry. Have you thought about whether teachers teach remotely, if quarantined, or will substitutes be hired who do not necessarily have expertise in the subject? Two week quarantines could greatly compromise quality of teaching.
Yeah. Yep, we we get that and which we know we're trying to create a list of substitutes who are as qualified as they can be. Tragically, we have a lot of people who have lost jobs throughout this. Thankfully, we haven't had that situation in Cohasset because I think there's some good financial management. But, you know, we may have a pool out there who's a little stronger because of that. I mean, I know certainly TECA is is benefiting from that. There are some great teachers out there who don't have jobs. And we'll, we don't want to go there. We have great teachers here, but our substitute list could be stronger.
Has any Kimberly McAdam, again, her address has been provided in connection with prior inquiries. Has any thought been given to fully remote start to the year, which I believe Hangon Public Schools has chosen? While I recognize the push to bring kids back in person as much as possible, it seems that the two day per week in person learning model is not really offering great live learning time. And it requires one cohort to be essentially abandoned to online home learning without any teacher assistance on the two days that students are at home. Wouldn't the fully remote model at least offer the opportunity for teachers to teach live to students each day as opposed to only three?
So I want to emphasize with that question, something that I have in the past, which is the importance of getting kids into the building because of a bunch of different reasons. Loss of learning, you know, so social, emotional distance, distance and struggle. You know, nutritional insecurity, lack of parental employment, all of these things that we know make it really important for our students to come in from a social perspective as well as an academic perspective. You know, we need the students need to interact with other students and need to be in our buildings. And I say this with respect to folks who may determine that it's not the path for their kid. I get that. I'm not trying to disparage that, but we're really shooting for that and we're trying our best to do that. I don't know if that's accurate about Hangon. Quite frankly, from what I understand, there's been no, I don't know any district in this area who has determined what their learning model is based on a an MOU or an agreement with their association. So everything's conjectural. Like I said, I think that they're trying to, they're trying to, everyone's trying to bargain three models and most cases two. And that doesn't necessitate that they have agreement on anything until that is decided on. So I don't know, Craig, you might have some folks in your team here thought or question, but.
Well, I think I think we might, but I want to just get to the questions that the school committee members, I just want you to take note of the things you want. That's what I've been doing when we're going to deliberate here.
I guess the value of bringing kids in person is just it's just paramount.
It is. And so I think I think a lot of people will will speak to that in a moment. I'm just trying to, there's more and more questions coming in here and I'm just trying to address them. Monique Armstrong of 255 Pond Street asks, can you provide rationale as to why the district moved away from the one week in school and one week remote? This seems incredibly disruptive and creates additional challenges for children who require structure and need that social emotional connectivity with their peers and their staff. I think that I think that you've answered that and this question was probably authored at a time before you answered other questions that were basically the same. Mr. Mike Riley, whose address has been provided in connection with prior inquiries, asks if you if students are going into school two days a week, remote one day, what are they doing the other two days?
Well, no, it's actually it's it's two days a week, remote three days.
That's correct. Tara with an unspecified last name or address asks, my high school student has a schedule she is happy with. Will it now change based on alphabet? She's in class, she's in classes with friends, which during this time, a peer support system, especially for high school, is very important.
No, the schedule won't change necessarily. Of course, the kids in it would shift somewhat. But you're still going to have kids in your own grade level in it. It's going to be more alphabetized.
Ms. Laura Soderberg of 16 Black Horse Lane asks, if the in person time is so limited, in parenthesis, eight days per month for high school students specifically, is it possible for families to opt out of elective courses? In parenthesis, furniture design and chorus and the line and the like, I think she meant. And just focus more instructional time on the core courses. I understand the notion of supporting the full student, but in trying times like these, a new paradigm should be considered.
Yeah, I I understand that. I, you know, I would, I would sort of lean on my high school principal and guidance team to to guide you through that a little bit. But we're, as a district, not advocating for that. But, you know, I we're trying to figure out what's best for every level and it's not always the same. So, you know, I would say advocate for that at at the high school level. I don't know, do you have anything to add to that, Dr. Scholz?
No, I'm, yeah, I understand it. I just.
Not where we are.
Yeah.
Okay. Kimberly McAdam, her address has been previously provided. She just states, Hangon Public Schools approved their plan, just FYI. No question, just a comment.
So remember, we've approved a plan.
I mean, there's no question there.
But we've approved a plan. It's just it's contingent on bargaining obligations.
Right.
Right, I don't know that.
I think maybe she was whatever. That was a comment and
I don't think they have any any different circumstance.
Elizabeth Moore, whose address has been provided in excuse me, in connection with previous inquiries, states, it feels as though the AM PM cohort continues to be pushed off. We don't have all the answers at the moment, but but no, we can. The bus response seems unfair. Situated as two times the number of buses and two times the number of students, this is going to be a year of adjustment and we can get elementary students in for a shorter AM PM time period to allow for cleaning. Cohasset High School and Cohasset Middle School have she's her, her question is fragmented into a field. I'm just trying to figure it out, decipher where CHS and CMS have four times. I know her question's fragmented and I can't, I can't interpret which one, you know, where she has like five different posts here. I'll just read her second post. The value of bringing students in is paramount is is exactly what Dr. Sullivan said. My question is, can we please continue to consider this with creative thinking, all in caps, and the amazing community we have? So I think that basically Ms. Moore is just impressing upon us that she's very interested in the AM PM cohort. And I'm sure that this will be addressed by the school committee in our deliberations in a brief, in a brief moment.
Yep. Thank you.
Ms. Jessica Di Lorenzo asks again, would you be willing to do a survey of families for Court A and B model versus one week on and one week off for secondary? With all due respect, you stood by this model, the parents and Desi just weeks ago. Now it appears you're going back on what you promoted. I do, I do understand the amount of work, time, effort you're going into all this, but this is our students' education. And as a parent and an educator, I am very concerned.
Yeah, I respect that. I really do. And it's again, I'm trying to put our students in the best place for success based on the factors that are in front of me. And we all are because I'm just the voice right now of the leadership team. And yeah, it's it's a tough one. You know, the question is, would I survey parents? I think there's so much that goes into the decision that I wouldn't be against it, but I don't think that that's the only factor involved here. There, as I mentioned, there's, there are several, several factors and you've articulated a few of those as well, Mr. Di Lorenzo. So I it's I hear what you're saying, but right now we're, we're, I'm advocating for what I had just had just mentioned based on where we are as a leadership team. And with our discussions with the association.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Next question from Mr. Mike Riley. He has provided his address in connection with prior inquiries. Are high school students still going to be 90 minute blocks, given state guidelines, 90 minute classes, one after another seem extremely long for synchronous remote learning?
So actually, they're not 90 minute classes in the in the model. There are they 60 minutes?
Yeah, you know, and I have to look specifically to see if they're they're 60 and maybe 40.
It's 44 at the middle school and I believe it's
60 at the high school, yeah.
I'm going to go with it. I think it's 60. It's not 90 because they're not, they're not, they're five classes, so less than that.
Yeah.
All right, next question is from Ms. Megan Warski of 11 Sankey Road. Thank you for prioritizing our students and teacher safety, following up on scheduling. I have a few questions in considering AM PM cohorts. One, I thought that I thought the DESI recommendation was for specialist classes to be remote if students are exasperated, are exasperating more air inside, such as chorus, band, gym. Could some specialists be remote for this year for scheduling purposes?
So she's not inaccurate in that they it wasn't an absolute, you know, order to have remote learning happening from our some of our specialist subjects. But because of the expirating of air and, you know, the the difficulty around some of those some of those places, the need courses that need more consideration with safety. So it's, what was the end of the question, though? I'm starting to get a little.
Could some specialists be remote for this year for scheduling?
Well, we do, we do have a model, I'll just take it out of our elementary, for instance, where they are teaching some remote. And they'll be synchronously streaming with students on the Wednesdays and some of the, some of the remote days, of course. So, yeah, we do, we are interspersing that in a remote fashion with some of the in person work at all levels. So they're doing a little bit of both. You know, I just think that we're, we have the ability here in Cohasset to be able to do some in person learning in those courses better than some other places for some of the factors I've mentioned. And we don't share instruments. We're smaller in our size, which doesn't help us in the busing. It helps us in this. We can spread out better because of the smaller, smaller sizes. We're able to, so I think we can do a mixture. And that's what we're looking, we're not looking to be as extreme as the guidance is given to us because we feel we can attenuate to the safety of students in 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 a in a in person manner and still offer some remote learning opportunities for them with that as well. And that's something that we're still bargaining and talking about.
Okay. I understood, so I'm going to address this and then two more questions and I'm going to open it up to the school committee deliberations. We've answered about 75 questions at this point. I think that's adequate. So I understand she Ms. Warski also states, I understand the concern of cleaning between AM PM cohorts, but if students were grouped by bus route in neighborhoods rather than alphabetically, could this help with the transportation issues?
Yeah, we looked at that. It did not work for us from a scheduling point of view. Neighborhood, neighborhood groupings just didn't work.
Lunch at home seems safer and also one less health, safety risk. Excuse me, lunch at home seems safer and also one less health and safety risk while also allowing for more cleaning time in between two sessions. Thank you for considering these points.
Well, again, the the problem with the cleaning time is I don't think there's sufficient cleaning time between the two cohorts. If you bring in two cohorts into the same day, I'm just going to state that. I think, you know, we're advocating for doing more deep cleaning. So the lunch doesn't really have a factor in that. And in terms of safety with lunch, I can understand that point. I just think that, you know, we we believe we we want a full, as full a day of experience for our students. We're going to lose, we believe, quality learning in transition. And we believe we should be serving lunch to our students every day and doing it appropriately. And I think we can do that.
And we are part of that program, so.
Yeah, we we have money tied into that as well. But, you know, yeah, we'll be, that could be cut. So anyway, and I know, I know that there's advocating for providing students with lunch, but I don't like the idea of giving students lunch at 3:30 in the afternoon either. You know, that's not healthy, not healthy for our kids. And that's what we'll be doing in the AM session, the PM session.
Tara, who does not provide last name or an address and may have been provided in connection with prior inquiries, states, I missed the first hour of the meeting. I apologize, but I second the idea of sending high school students together by grade, not by alphabet. Please consider a survey for high school parents, asking thoughts on full grade together versus going by alphabet.
The issue, just again, the issue is that model required synchronous teaching. It required us to spread them out over two rooms and to bring staff in. And as we're moving through this, that's not becoming as probable. And I'm not willing at this late date to stake everything on that. And that's really the problem with it.
Last
And it does provide, as I said, we also had, there's a lot of good points to this model because it provides more of an opportunity for families who, quite a few have voiced the ability to keep their middle and high school student on the same schedule. Like, that's always important, too. So there's, there's a lot to it, but it's more than just parental need.
Last question is from Ms. Jean Dipold of 93 South Main Street. Regarding the buses, it seems like we need more buses, including to better accommodate our MEKO students and have more flexibility on schooling options, including for the future. And if the pandemic goes longer than we all want. If memory serves me correctly, last school committee hearing, there was an extra $89,000 in the budget, which was devoted half to free cash, half to reserves. The bus issue seems to be surmountable and is not a financial one, but planning one. Will the administration committee be planning to address these bus limitations so we are not having the same discussion next year?
Well, I mean, we can try. I mean, there's this, but this, it's not just buses, as we learned, it's drivers, scaling the drivers. It's the the cost of the drivers. And then you have to think about, you know, we lease our buses, buses, from what I've been told, I'm not the expert on buses, but they're about six months out. We're trying to get one. I mean, this is also a really tough scenario. I know the question was asking us to look forward and plan for the future. Yeah, that's something we can consider and look at. I don't think that's a bad thought. I mean, we are certainly we do have a small bus fleet and and there are some restrictions that come with that. So I think it would be prudent to see if we could look, look at that moving forward, if it would help us in any future scenario. But to say that's going to help with this coming year is probably not accurate. Sorry.
Okay, that's all the, that's all the questions that we can take tonight. I'm going to move to the school committee members deliberations in alphabetical order, Mrs. Colery.
I actually don't have anything. Thank you for all your hard work, Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scholz.
You too. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess it's me. Craig? Craig?
All right, I'm just trying to, yes, it's a, sorry, Mr. Keener, you're up, yes.
Yes, there, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the questions. I think that was a good Good questions. Good questions. And I also too is, you know, I on a personal level, too, I just want to thank all the thank yous that have been coming in from all the from from all the folks in the community. It's well taken because this has been an unusual time for all of us. And, you know, as far as the chair goes and the and the administration goes, I just also in the vice chair, all the work that you guys have been doing. There's so many different meetings that I don't think that people are aware of from negotiating with teachers. And 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 also too is just try to get these questions answered in, you know, high regards to you guys for that. Also, too, is I want to state that this isn't, this is an ongoing thing. So the more and more we can communicate with you guys, the better. We're always looking for for some kind of input, but also some kind of solutions as well. Those are the things that we're reaching out to the community for. That's why these are so important. Those are the things that we're reaching out to the community for. That's why these are so important. I also wanna thank the, the teachers for, for being there. I know it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a difficult situation for them, so we're all praying for them and we're all hoping for the best. And, you know, we're, you know, again, this is something that you've heard a lot, but we're all in this together, we're gonna work this out. So the more and more input, the more and more engaging you guys are, the more I think we're gonna get through this.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Marr.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan, and thank you, everybody. I don't wanna sound like a broken record. That, that was an excellent process to go through, to hear everybody's concerns. So maybe, Mr. McClellan, I could just maybe address a couple of things I took notes on that came up in no particular order. I did have a comment, Dr. Skollins, that maybe when you have the workshops for the parents, and particularly the one with Dr. Golden, maybe our town health agent, Pam Fahey, could be invited to that, because she might have some perspectives from the town that parents might gain some insight into of how, how the town is managing and how that relates to the schools. And I would really encourage parents to, to try to get to these workshops and attend them so that we can, you can help your children. Dr. Sullivan mentioned he's gonna have someone come in to deal with some of the trauma. And as he said, there's some trauma with the big T and trauma with a little t and, and, and how we, as the adults in the situation, can help all of our children adjust to the reentry into school, I think would be really helpful. And these workshops, I think, will help give parents those tools to help their children. And I think I would like to thank you, Dr. Skollins, for organizing them. I just wanted to comment, Hingham is not in a remote model. They are the plan that they voted on. They are going remote. It's called Phase One on September 16th, which provides remote instruction for grades K through 12, in-person instruction for specified high need students, and in-person activities for groups and cohorts A and B. And then, two weeks later, on the 28th, they're going to a hybrid instruction. So I just wanted to clarify that point. And there was also, that was supported by Liza Lowry, who's on the Hingham School Committee. Regarding the cash back that was given to the, back to the town, that was the result of a small surplus at the end of fiscal year 20. So it couldn't be, couldn't be used for our go-forward expenses in fiscal year 21. I think the idea of looking at our buses, if the situation is ongoing and extends further, you know, into the next school year, beginning in September of 2021, I, I think looking at our buses and how we organize our transportation would be a very worthwhile exercise. Dr. Sullivan is absolutely correct. It's getting the drivers. Our bus fleet is on a lease arrangement. We're, we lease them for three years at a time. So we would have to look at, at more, you know, temporary or stopgap measures if we were to look at changing our bus routes or adding more to our fleet. I think that was all my comments. I think that, you know, again, I just wanna reiterate what we voted on at our last meeting was a draft of the plan. And we now have a new draft that we've talked about tonight, which will go to a vote next week at another meeting. And everything is fluid. I mean, when Dr. Sullivan says things are coming in, he literally emailed us updated guidance at 5 o'clock this afternoon. So things are changing. And it's important that we remain fluid and flexible as best we can, and we're trying to do the best for the district. And I would encourage you, Dr. Sullivan has offered, as has Dr. Skollins, if you have individual concerns or needs, please reach out to them. And they will, because of the size of our district, I think we're more apt to be able to accommodate the smaller, you know, the request, they're not small to you, but, you know, smaller in terms of our population. I would definitely encourage everyone to reach out to them and have conversations and, and read, read the plans that are posted on the website. This is strange times for all of us. It's all, that's all I can say. So that's all I really wanted to say and answer to some of the comments that had come up. And thank you, Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Skollins and Chairman McClellan.
Thank you, Mrs. Marr. Mrs. St. Orange.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who is here tonight. It's great to see over 100 participants at a school committee meeting, very exciting for a Wednesday night. Mrs. Marr, thank you for bringing up some of the, some of your points. We're on my list, so I will not repeat those. One thing that I've kind of been mulling over is how we think about going into a remote model, because I think all of us can only think from experience, and that experience was a traumatizing spring 2020. And that's not necessarily what it's going to look like this year. I think now that we have this color-coded system, we are, you know, already seeing towns going in and out of different colors. People do get sick, people hopefully get better. Like Dr. Sullivan said, we need to be so careful and take each other, take care of each other as a community. But I think sometimes it's coming up in terms of TECA, can I come back if we go remote? I think we just, I just wanna encourage everyone to think about going remote as a temporary situation and not a situation in which we go remote and that's how it is for the rest of the year. I think that this, as we progress, we may find that it's more fluid. I'm seeing that with, you know, friends' office buildings, you know, you, you might have someone who's symptomatic, and then you go remote and you deep clean, and then people are asymptomatic and everyone is self-quarantined, and then you're back in. So I just think that we need to perhaps adjust our thinking to the possibility that if and when we go into remote learning fully for the district, it is not like a forever, as we experienced from, you know, March 13th through the end, or whatever the date was, through the end of the school year, this past school year. So just something to kind of adjust our thinking on that. I also just really, as a mom and a teacher in a different district, want to say that if I were with a one group of kids in the morning, I would be really concerned about having a separate group of kids in the afternoon, especially at the elementary level. Arrival and dismissal is a pretty prolonged process, and we're gonna have to be using different exits and be very methodical, more so than in the past, to keep kids separate and distanced. And I would just be really concerned about the actual amount of time. You know, if an hour is set in the middle of the day, kind of if, for those of you out there who have taught in school, an hour of a scheduled time never really becomes an hour. And we need to make sure our teachers are safe and have a chance to eat and use the bathroom. So just something to consider, that hour wouldn't really be a full hour. And I'd just be so concerned about making sure that things are clean and safe for all who are in that building, those buildings, and all of our, and, and that affects our whole community, because we're all here and we're all kind of, hopefully not close, but coming into contact with each other. So I think that's all for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. In terms of my comments, I do have a few this week. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I know we have the majority of our meeting left here in front of us, so I'm trying to be brief. But in terms of TECA, there's a lot of concern surrounding TECA, and whether or not it's a good model, whether it provides a quality education, and you know, whether we should be offering something to the students that allows them to connect with Cohasset. There is a hard truth to this issue, and that is that we, we do not have, we would love to have our remote students just be part of the, the school. But we don't, as discussed, and I think that Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Skollins adequately articulated this, but we don't have the resources to do it. We can't offer both a hybrid and a fully remote model. And the, the, the voice of the community, as I, as, as we stated in our missive that went out last night, has been decidedly clear that as much in-person, in-school time as possible is what the community is looking for. It is absolutely understood and acknowledged that some families have decided that fully remote is the best option for them and the safest option for them, and that's their prerogative, and that's absolutely understandable under the circumstances. But we just can't offer both. And so our district is, is left with the, the the conundrum of finding that remote learning alternative for students. Now, there aren't a lot of options. This is not, this is, there has not been a demand like this. Demand was created overnight for this particular model. And so there, there aren't a lot of alternatives. There, TECA, there's, I think, one other alternative, and then there's homeschooling. And TECA is something that was established. It's, it's been, it's, it's been in existence. It's, it's well-established. And I understand the reviews have varied, and it's not something that, you know, we have looked into in detail in the past. But we have two individuals that lead our schools that both have doctorates of education, and they both have the best interests of our children and students in mind. And they have looked into this and are confident that it will meet the needs of the students that, that elect to choose that learning model. I know that neither one of these two individuals would ever endorse something that is not adequate and would not equip, equip our, our fully remote students with a, a, a robust academic experience. So I think that the, the, the hard truth that you have to face is if, is if you believe that your family needs that fully remote model, you just have to decide whether TECA is for you or not. Whether TECA is for you or whether you wanna homeschool your children, it's up to you. But there aren't a lot of options, and we're, we're really, our hands are quite tied in this sense. So you're just gonna have to make the decision, we're not going to be able to provide the perfect solution for you. And, 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 you know, that's just what's become abundantly clear to me, and, you know, it's not a good answer. And frankly, I think we all need to be prepared to be disappointed here. I mean, I'm disappointed. I'm the chairperson of the school committee. I'm disappointed. I want my kid, I want my elementary school aged children, child to go to school every day, like she deserves and like she needs. I want that. It's not happening. It is not happening. So I have to be disappointed, and we're all gonna have to be. And it's not something we want, but the other issue I want to address is I, I wanna caution people against looking to other districts to compare what they're doing. Because, for a number of reasons. One is the obvious issue that has been addressed a number of times, is that our, our resources, the resources vary from district to district. It's just, it's just, it's true. And I understand that there's been some discourse about how we can maybe make accommodations, and there's been some, some statements about maybe purchasing more buses, and that type of discourse is great. And all of this participation has been amazing, and, and this has led to, and it will lead to, the most constructive final plan that we end up voting on next week. But the harsh realities are that our, our, our resources do distinctly differ from that of other districts, and we can't get around that. And, and, and the other thing is, is we, we don't, even if some district has approved a plan, which we've approved a draft plan, it's not the final plan yet, but I'm not involved in that district, so I, I don't know exactly what the moving parts are involved in that decision, and whether the actual decision that they've advertised through the Patriot Ledger or other avenues is actually the one that's gonna be executed come, you know, their first day of school. I mean, I think you need to wait until that time comes to really see what the districts are doing, because it's a very fluid situation with, with information coming at our superintendent and assistant superintendent on a daily basis. So, and frankly, and lastly, with regards to this issue, we don't know what's going to be best. We don't know what plan will prove to be the best. Nobody has done this before. So I think all the districts, okay, and all the leadership and all the school committees and all the families and all the stakeholders and all the teachers and all the staff, they are absolutely striving to arrive and identify and realize the most favorable outcome for their district. But nobody has a crystal ball. We don't know what that's going to be. We just make educated guesses and, and, and we make, and we, and we proceed based on those guesses and the data available to us, which is, by the way, ever-changing. And, and in that sense, we, we make decisions. And there are going to be details that are gonna provide hurdles and challenges as we run down this road. And I think things like holidays are things that, that, you know, there's, there's very specific details, you know, sort of on a micro level, that we are going to have to address, and they're valid, and they should be addressed and raised by our community. But I don't think any plan is gonna be able to acknowledge or accommodate every single challenge at this time. I am personally confident that the plan that we have approved and the plan that, you know, the general hybrid model that we have here is, is the best solution for our district. And again, I'm disappointed with it. I, I don't, I don't want that. But it's the best, worst solution to this terrible problem. And, and it really, really effectively addresses all of the challenges that I don't think are adequately addressed in other proposals. And just looking at my list here to figure out what other in-person learning time is a very important consideration, and, and we are, this plan maximizes it. In terms of shifting from the high school, the, the high school, middle school model to the 212 model at the elementary we're previously at, that's something that I think is part of this fluid situation. It's something that, you know, we were met with a challenge or an issue that made us anticipate great problems in adhering to that initial model that we didn't necessarily anticipate at first. And that's why, frankly, we voted on a draft plan, not a final plan. And that's why we've held numerous forums, including, including numerous school committee meetings, so we could, we could gather all this input, and we could wait for a time where we knew that we have been confronted with all the relevant information. And that is why we're waiting till next week, which in our opinion is the absolute latest we could wait before delivering to our families a firm plan so that they can manage their own expectations and make their own plans, which is already too short of a timeframe, but it's, it's, it's the best we could do, given the circumstances and the timeframe that was sort of, I think, thrust upon us by the circumstances and by the, you know, state government that proceeded in the way that they saw was, 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 was best. In terms of distribution of a final draft, I think that Dr. Sullivan hit on this, but we will certainly distribute what we plan to vote on prior to having that voted on, so people can review it. And we can have discussion just like tonight before that's voted on. But listen, some people are gonna be unhappy. No one's gonna be, this is not gonna be a unanimous situation where everyone in the community says, yep, that's the way to go. We are going to make the decision based on what we believe the majority of our constituents feel is appropriate and adequate and appropriate, and, and, and just and firmly addressing the needs of our students. And the students are the one that come, the ones that come first. So I think that's all I have to say tonight. I know it was sort of long-winded, but I thought there were some important points as I, I listened to the community and some of the, some of the input that we gathered here tonight, and I thought that those were some important points to make, because frankly, there just aren't going to be great answers to, to all the concerns and challenges raised or that we confront. So thank you, all of you that logged into this meeting and provided your input and asked your questions. And thank you to our administration and our school committee members who have worked so hard on this. Thank you to everyone. As we mentioned in our message last night, this is a collective effort. This is our challenge. And we are going to arrive at the final plan together, only after everyone has been informed. And we, we could not do it without this level of participation from the community. And we're fortunate to live in a community where everyone is incentivized and motivated to provide their own personal input. So thank you. With that, unless there's any other deliberation or comment from the school committee, I'm, I'm prepared to move on in the agenda here. Mrs. St. Orange.
I have one quick comment, and it circles back to the workshop offered for families, the one that's a 1:00 PM workshop. I'm just curious, I plan on attending that because I will be available, but there are a lot of people who work at that time. Is that gonna be recorded and available to watch at another time, Dr. Skollins?
It is. It's going to be recorded, and then it's gonna be posted on the website. That's a great question. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other comments from the school committee on the reentry plan that is to be finalized and voted on next week? Seeing none. Dr. Sullivan, could you please speak to us about the hiring update on the agenda?
I sure will.
Yes, I will. Now I will. Can you all see my screen?
You can see it, Dr. Sullivan.
Good, but thank you. So this is an update of our hirings that we've, we've worked on. You can see as, as it gets, uh, you know, later into the, the time here, we've been able to hire some, some new folks. We were able to hire a technical support specialist, Greg Morse, who was replacing a, our former technical support specialist, Dan Kelly, who is now our deputy CIO, who replaced Bart Riley, who retired. So that was kind of a, a nice transition for us. You can see that we have, since we last talked, been able to hire a .5 psychologist, .5 adjustment counselor. I'll remind you that this was the adjustment counselor position that we were able to split in half because Caitlin Stromberg moved into what she wanted to do, which was a .5 psychologist, .5 adjustment counselor at the high school, which allowed us to duplicate that model at the middle school, which I think is fabulous because it has very much an independent look for each school. We're not sharing students in regards to that. And yet we can still create that collaboration, which will help our students six through 12. In a deeper way. That person's name, Megan Leary. I met with her and she's absolutely fabulous. We have a, a long-term maternity position. And we have Kaylee Schneider replacing that teacher at Deer Hill. So that's where we are right now. I believe we have, uh, we did hire our middle school secretary, Deborah Simmons. Which is, is great. So we're fully, fully staffed in that regard. Uh, and you can see all of the other hires that we've, uh, we've had a busy summer. It's been, um, you know, but very productive. I have to say the, uh, as, as is the case all the time, the staff we bring into class of public schools is second to none. And these folks, I think are going to contribute greatly. As we move into the year and, and going further than that. So I don't know if there's any more, any questions about our hires here. Chairman McClellan.
Any members of, I do not have any, any members of the school committee have any questions regarding this hiring update? I do not see any. So that I think concludes the superintendent's report. I thank you so much, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
I'd move on and turn to Mrs. Susan Owen, our director of finance and operations for the finance monthly update.
I believe, Dr. Scollins, you might be able to share this document.
I can.
I can if I need to, but. You might have it more readily available. Let me try, go for it.
I do, I want to make sure I'm pulling it up right. I mean, it's enough, I have it. Okay, just want to make sure. Sometimes when you have things up on your screen, different things show up.
Correct. Share, share this with you.
All right, how did I do? Can you see it?
You see it?
I might need you to scroll down as I go.
All right, you tell me. Susan, tell me.
So this is just a brief, if that's to a brief finance and operations update for the month of July. So I, I tried to bring it back to the basics, which the voted school budget for FY21 was Through the end of July, the district has expended $325,369. We've also encumbered through purchase orders in amount of $142,030, which leaves an available balance at this time of $20,493,492,456, sorry. Today to about 2.2% we've spent of the operating budget. I look back to last year and last year at this time, we were at 8.2. Obviously last year we were moving a little bit quicker. School was partially open, people were ordering. I'm sure the COVID, you know, closure plays a significant role in this. But as school opens up, that will probably balance out and be, you know, in an equitable percentage once we get moving. I tried to give you a brief, just a brief balance on the revolving and donations account. I'm, I'm not going to read through every one unless you'd like me to. A more detailed report with all the expenditures and revenue will come at one of the next meetings. We're still reconciling that. I do have the ending balances listed here and it goes from athletic revolving all the way down to gifts and donations. Some of them I'm still trying, I'm still learning what, what like an alumni field means. What does that consist of? I, I mean, I know it's a, it's a gift. I'm not sure what, what we would use it for, but I'm, I'm still digging through the weeds on things like that, getting to know the different accounts that we have. And you can see it goes through down, all the way through school committee gifts, swim team, high school gift, school summer institute. Then we're getting into the grants. So I've been working with the town accountant. Last Wednesday we met and we were going to meet again today, but we, he got tied up with something. The, the town hasn't closed the budget yet, which is what he's trying to do. So the ramifications when the year's not closed, it is the encumbrances and the balances, they, they, they roll over, but they can't be, they roll over together and they can't be separated. So it makes it difficult to give an accurate balance. We're meeting again next Wednesday and hopefully we'll finalize what our balances are in the grants and I can give you a very detailed report on that. I thought it'd be interesting to look at some of our circuit breaker, just as I'm learning, as I'm going along to see, you know, in FY17, there was based on 14 students at a 70% reimbursement rate. Up to FY20 with 19, 19 students at 75%. And you can see that the difference in the reimbursement amounts. Just for my own personal interest, I wanted to see what, what the numbers look like going back. I also know that there was a question on PPE and what we had on hand. This list is still growing. It's changing as we go, as everything else right now is fluid. So it tells you on hand, we have the, we have 120 pair of eye protection. We have 60,000 applications of hand sanitizers coming from dispensers. We have 9,000 pair of gloves, 3,000 K995 masks, 7,500 gowns, 475 cloth masks, 25,000 procedure masks, and then injury balls with hand sanitizer, hand sanitizer, excuse me. We have 800. This was based on about a three-month supply of what we would need. It doesn't take into account any of the hand sanitizers that staff may bring in or students. But we covered at least the maximum we would need for three months.
I think what's, what's also unique there is that I think a lot of districts have these on order. We have them. We actually have them. So that's, that's a huge, like benefit for us and it's a great show by our town in really working with us to get these items. So we're, we're stocked well.
We're stocked very well. Within the facilities department and we have dumpsters at all the schools as we're purging, purging some of the, the old things that are left in classrooms. We have trailers at all the schools that are full of excess furniture. And other schools, school things. I mean, I know the high school has probably three full trailers already.
Yeah, just to clarify for any staff member that might be watching, we're, these are, these are items that are school items that are.
School items.
We've cleared out. Yeah.
These are all school items. These are not staff items. These are all school items. We also have tents. We talked about the tents. Each one of the schools has one or more tents going up. So that's in process. We have the plexiglass dividers going in all the main offices. So, I mean, it's ongoing. We, we've looked at, which Patrick talked about earlier about the air conditioning or HVAC systems in the school. So facilities has been pretty much running at 200 miles per hour this summer. And still going, but I mean, we're pretty well prepared. I don't know if you have any questions on anything?
We also added, just so people know, directionals, we're, we're looking at.
Sorry, signage, that was today.
I mean, there is, um, we're, we're moving. We, we met as a leadership team and we have a checklist we're going right through that's taken right from our plan, you know, implementing. And we're going to be all ready to go. And Sue is doing a great job leading the charge with, um, working with our town, with Glenn Pratt, facilities and our custodial crew. We're going to, we'll be ready.
Thank you so much, Ms. Owen, and thank you, Dr. Sullivan. I saw Mrs. Marr had a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McClellan. I just wanted to comment on the operating budget. The 8.2% from FY20 from last year, we had encumbered over a million dollars in encumbrances and 977,000 of that was in special ed tuitions. We had a point of view last year that we, we knew we're, we were going to have expenses, we uncovered them. And since we knew what some of our special education tuitions were going to be, we encumbered them. So that's the difference. If you take the 977 out of the million 75, our encumbrances are pretty comparable to where we are this year. So. I just wanted to make that point. I didn't want people to think that we were, we were over, overspent last year. The revolving and donations accounts, Sue, I can help you figure out some of these, you know, if you wanted to have a, a finance and facility subcommittee meeting so we can go through what some of these are and how they're used, I'd be happy to do that.
That would be great.
And I mean, we're in decent, we're in deep, we're in good shape compared to last year. If you take the circuit breaker out, we're actually up, I think we're at, the total came out to be about 750,000 compared to about 600,000 last year. And then my final question is on the PPE. You mentioned we have three months' supply on hand. When is the trigger to order the next three months' worth of supplies so that our, our supply chain, we don't run out?
So we're working very closely with the principals and with Glenn Pratt. I think by the end of this week, he's going to send out a form to the principals requesting what they want stocked in their schools. Cause right now all of this is stored, um, in a storage unit. It's the emergency center over at Deer Hill. So we're going to try to get some of it off into the schools. And then within the first few weeks, depending, we'll be able to monitor how, how fast the supplies are going down. And we have the same vendor on order to just replenish. So, I mean, we're not going to let it run down low. If it goes quickly, we'll order earlier. If it's goes slower, we won't order immediately. It's kind of a play it by ear because we don't know. You know, we don't know how many people are going to bring in their own.
Right, right. I, I would, I would just recommend that maybe you look at a portion of the next subsequent three months. Cause I work in supply chain and logistics. And if, if other districts don't even have their first three months' worth of PPE on hand, it's going to create a, a backorder situation and a backfill. So even if you took, so if this was three months, even if you took one month's, you know, a third of this and got requisitions out, at least you could then backfill and not be overstocked based on usage in the first three months.
Now that's, that's a great idea. That's a great. I'll, um, make sure we do that.
Yeah, I think the, um, my, my feeling always was that the the ordering quantity here was really, um, it, it had some extra kind of packed into it.
Yeah.
I really, I really think they were pretty liberal in the fact of how many masks we're going to use, for instance, and how many, I, I mean, I've had one mask since March 13th that I washed a couple of times, but I, I do, you're totally right, Ellen. I think that's a great idea.
No, that is a great idea. Thank you. The, the other thing I wanted, I didn't, I didn't, when I, when I said we were at 2.22% this year, but 8. something last year. And I, you know, I mentioned that it could be based on the COVID. I didn't mean that last year we were overspending, but this year, like I met with Teresa and Barbara today. So we, we just sat down and we're going to sit down again next week and go over all the tuitions and get them encumbered for the year. So it's just, we're, we're just doing it at a later time in the year. It'd be because people haven't been in the office.
Yeah.
Things aren't, things aren't moving as fast as they are, they, they are usually because we're so focused on everything else. The other thing I need to add is, and it's just for thought, in our leadership team, we talked about the first 10 days of schools, you know, should we be, should we be paying? Or it's recommended that we should be paying the bus drivers and the cafeteria workers because they will be here. The bus drivers will be learning their routes. The cafeteria, most of the staff have been here all summer cooking and, and servicing the senior center. So that's something that I think we should talk about, what the plan is at least for those first 10 days of any, anyone that's, that's here, that's an hourly person submitting time slips, you know, what do we do those first 10 days? Do we pay them? Do we leave them with no pay till September 22nd? You know, we recommended that we pay them for those 10 days and then we go from there.
Okay, so is that something that requires a vote, Dr. Sullivan?
I believe it would. I believe it would require a vote. I, you know, I think it's whether we vote on it today or if maybe Ellen would have some, some thoughts on the, if this is something we would need to post to vote. But my thought is it would need a vote and I do echo what Sue has mentioned regarding our feelings about paying these individuals.
Okay. Well, maybe our resident parliamentarian here might have some thoughts on whether or not it's, it's prudent to take a vote on it without it being expressly on the, on the agenda, though I, I recognize that some finance issues come up that aren't, you know, expressly stated on the agenda, but, and we still vote on them. But Mrs. Marr, do you have any insight there?
Um. Do I have any insight? Well, I, I, I concur with Mrs. Owens and Superintendent Sullivan that, you know, we, we should, you know, consider paying our bus drivers and cafeteria workers for the first 10 days. First of all, it's in the budget. When we voted on the budget in June, late May, June. We were starting school, you know, 10 days prior. So it, the money's there and it's in keeping with our philosophy about our staff that we did, that we carried forth all spring by, by keeping our people on the payroll. Can this, can, I'm just hemming and hawing on whether or not, because it's not a specific agenda item, if it can be voted on. I, I think it's in the context of this presentation. I don't see why it couldn't be.
I agree, and I don't think anyone here disagrees that people that work should be paid. So I'd entertain a motion right now, if there's a motion on the floor to approve payment to those staff members for the first 10 days. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second, Lydia.
Second is by Ms. St. Ange. I'm going to take a roll call vote as we have to take with regards to any vote in this virtual forum in alphabetical order. Mrs. Coleri?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Marr?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. That motion unanimously passes, Dr. Sullivan. So I think that the school committee's approved payment, Mrs. Owen, for those staff members for the first 10 days of school.
Thank you.
All right, is, uh, Mrs. Owen, does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Are there any further questions for Mrs. Owen? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you so much, Ms. Owen, for that report. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
School committee comments and communications. In this section, we have important consideration of some policy changes. I want to, just for those that are watching at home that are probably looking to log off as soon as possible. I want to sort of, the EC, EBCFA, excuse me, it's item E2, document E2 relates to the face coverings policy. That was raised in a number of different public comments today, or excuse me, public questions. So I'd like to sort of address that first. This is the policy that, that anticipates mandating that all students of all ages in the public schools and co-hasset wear face coverings whenever they are within the building. So is there any, is there any comments or question, excuse me, discussion on this issue from the committee? Mrs. Marr?
I, I'd like to, um, just if the policy subcommittee could speak to that point specifically, since the state guidance is different. And I think it'd be helpful for the community and the, the rest of the committee to understand that. And to clarify, when we say all students, is that including preschool? And then I have one more question on this policy. If, would you like me to wait to ask that or not?
No, I think, go ahead. I mean, you asked your questions and then I think it is prudent to have the subcommittee sort of presented. I was just sort of directing the particular doc. I just wanted to address this. I just wanted to address this first, is basically what I was trying to do.
Sure. The, the only other comment I had on this is the MASC policy had a provision that the student mask is to be provided by the family, and staff should bring their own, but schools will provide one in the event that someone doesn't have a mask. And I just think that's a good clarifying point, that our expectation, according to our, our entry plan, our reentry plan, is that students come to school with a mask, as does staff, but we do have reserves in the event they don't have them, just so there's no ambiguity on it. And that was my only other comment on this policy.
Okay, I think the subcommittee consists of Mrs. St. Ange and Mrs. Coleri. Would one of you be so kind as to sort of introduce this?
Well, I'll, I'll just say that we did have a long discussion about this, and we weighed a lot of pros and cons of putting a policy in place that would require all students in the building to wear a mask. I think one of the things that, it, I don't think it makes Cohasset necessarily extremely unique, but we do have a building that has pre-K to two, right? So it becomes a really sort of precarious situation to require one grade within that building to wear masks and the others to not. That, that is sort of an aside. We believe that all students should wear masks. And, you know, that said, the processes for building leadership, we want the building leadership to be able to handle kids who have a hard time with this in an age-appropriate way, and, and it is sort of specified. Lydia, do you have anything that you want to add to this?
I think as a part of our discussion, we talked about the fact that the CDC recommended mask-wearing for all humans to, over the age of two. And in order to keep our community as safe as possible, it felt like that makes sense to, you know, extend that into our school setting. And I think Mrs. Coleri is correct, that, you know, we have a lower elementary and an upper elementary split. Many schools are K through five, and, and I just think it makes sense to have a uniform approach to our safety precautions, and it is hard. It's hard for all of us to wear masks, but it's the safest thing to do right now. And, and that is why we wrote it down.
Okay, um, I guess I would, so Mrs. Marr did raise a good issue, though, and that is, you just mentioned all, Mrs. St. Ange, you just mentioned all humans under the age, excuse me, over the age of two would be required to wear face coverings. That's not specified in the policy. Is that something that we should specify in the policy? Is that what the intent of the group was?
It says that everyone in the building, right?
It does.
So.
So I don't know. Is, I mean, is there any, I mean, what about preschool? I mean, I understand that that's older than two, but are we, are we gonna require preschoolers as well?
Yep.
Yes. I mean, if we need to write, I don't know if we need to write grades into it. We, we're trying to be all-encompassing by saying everyone in the building.
Okay, and so, and I guess, at least my, my last point is, so if two-year-olds are brought into the building, I understand there's no classes with two-year-olds in it, but if two-year-olds are brought in the building, they need to have masks on them, or an infant, or what?
Yeah, all visitor.
I, I don't know.
It does say in the policy, am I, okay. It does say in the policy that all visitors need to wear masks.
I mean, I, I would, I would put forward.
Or should we say all visitors over the age of two?
Yeah, we can simply just, where it lists the exceptions there, and it says the individual, colon, we can just say is under, is under two years of age. That's one of the exceptions.
I think that's, that's reasonable.
I think it is, yes. Okay. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay.
Well, well, hold on. Should we put it there, or should we put it in the visitor part? Later in the policy, towards where the legal references are, right?
Yeah, except, except the visitor wouldn't be in violation if the individual is under two years of age, if that's listed as an express, expressly enumerated exception to the policy.
All right.
And there was one other issue I think I had. No, maybe not. Does anyone else, is the intent to take a vote on this tonight? I thought it was, but then I'm looking at the agenda, it says first read.
So, um, hold on one second.
Let me, let me rephrase that. I would like to take a vote on this if possible.
So I just want to address Mrs. Marr's last point, though, the, the point about who provides the masks, right?
That was what I wanted to raise. Thanks.
Um, we had council review this before we presented it to the committee, and they actually took that part out.
Because we had left that in, from the mask proposal, right, Mrs. Coleri? Yeah, we had left in that statement, but then it was removed.
I, I think that it was probably done because it is, as Mrs. Marr pointed out, required by the state that we, we do, are, are able to provide those. So to create a policy around that issue, I, I think that the idea is to allow the state regulations to control and leave this more open-ended. I, I think that, you know, we were obviously prepared to do that, to provide those masks to those students. And I, I mean, I, I'm comfortable leaving it out, as, as, you know, council's advised. But if some school committee member feels strongly about, you know, putting that in there as part of the policy that we are required to provide masks, speak now. Mrs. Marr?
Uh, can you elaborate on why council felt that it should be pulled out?
I can't. She didn't comment on it. I just didn't feel strongly personally about it. And so I sent the revised version.
Is that something that it would be advisable to revisit and, and circle back, back and ask before we vote on it?
I would feel comfortable with that, Mrs. St. Ange. I think that's a good idea. Because I think if we, if we look at the purpose of policy, it's to create a framework for which the superintendent can establish protocols. So if he has a protocol that every student wears a mask, and we have a policy that supports it, that's, that's the sequence in how things are supposed to happen. And I, I kind of would like some understanding from council as to why they thought it should be removed, because MASC, also, that's their policies with legal counsel. So there's kind of a little conflict there. So I'm just curious about that.
I think that's, that's perfectly prudent, Mrs. Marr. What I would like to do is sort of, I just want to ask the committee, for anyone, and, and this is sort of the edification of the, of the families watching at home, anyone that has an objection to the general policy that, that all humans over the age of two need to wear face coverings in school, voice that now. And if there is no objection voiced, I think it'll at least, I think it'll at least sort of announce to the community that that's the direction that we're heading in, even though we can't take the vote tonight because of the language, and we don't want to have to go back and, and change the policy after we've already voted it. So is anyone object to the overall concept here, that we're, that this policy stands for? That we need to, and I know that Mrs. St. Ange and Mrs. Coleri don't, because you guys drafted it. But, so I'm asking basically, myself, Mrs. Marr, and Mr. Kearney, do please note any objections to this face covering, the general gist of this face covering policy? Are there any?
No.
I don't have any either. So members of the public that are, that are, that are watching at home, you'll, you'll know what direction we're gonna be heading in in that vote next week. We just can't take it for language purpose at this time, but be prepared for all students to be required to wear masks as a result of a vote on August 26th at that special meeting next week. Okay, so can we move on to, unless everyone has any other discussion on this particular policy? Anyone? Seeing none, move on to, we'll move backwards now to E1, that's EBC.
EBC supplemental, okay. Hang on one second. Okay. Yeah, so this basically is about how we're, how and why we're implementing our revised approach as a district. And there was not a lot of input or feedback from council. This is a very close match to masks draft policy, or recommended policy, I should say. So does anyone have any questions or feedback on this? Or, Mrs. St. Ange, did you want to say anything about this one?
I, I think that when we were discussing this, we, yeah, we stuck pretty close to what mask was recommending. Mrs. Coleri, was this the one in which we shifted some language slightly in reference, you know, directing kind of questions and decision to the plan, rather than solely to the superintendent? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I just have a few wordsmithing issues. The fourth bullet that starts with comply with, I would like to change, strike orders issued by the governor and replace that with any and all orders. The governor isn't the only administrative agency where orders may come from. So I'd just like to make that, extend that, you know, broaden that language a little bit, comply with any and all orders, comma, and then just leave the rest of it as is. Um, I don't know if anyone has any disagreement with that. If you, I mean, I'm just gonna go to the next one. I don't have, this is only one more, so if you disagree with what I'm saying, just say so. The sixth bullet starts with facilitate expediency. I would like to change the language to facilitate, I'd like to strike expediency. Hold on, let me just read. I'm actually confused, but hold on one second. Give me one second. Yeah, so I think what I'd rather read, and please let me know if you disagree, is to read facilitate the deliberate but expedient execution of the school committee-approved back-to-school plan. So I'd like to strike expediency of administrator-staff. Again, sort of broadening the language, making it a little bit more general.
Say it again, Craig, sorry.
Facilitate the deliberate but expedient execution of the school committee-approved back-to-school plan. I want to strike expediency of administrator slash staff.
Okay. I think it makes sense to broaden in both of those areas.
Okay. Is there any reason why anyone feels strongly about not voting on this policy tonight? Mrs. Marr?
Um, before I answer that question, which is, no, I don't have a problem voting on the, the policy tonight. I just have a, a question about, the intent is that this is, this is due to the public health emergency, and that, once we're out of this, because we will come out of this, we will revert back to our original EBC emergency plan. So that, so that everyone understands, this isn't a permanent policy for us. It's just supplementing what we have due to the public health emergency. And then once the health emergency's over, we're gonna go back to, to the original policy.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and it's specific to our COVID-19 public health emergency. Should there be a different health emergency in the future, right? It says, it says COVID-19 on the top.
Right.
We, we need an additional supplemental policy, should there be some sort of other awful pandemic that we'd have to deal with.
Let's hope not.
Okay, so does anyone have any further discussion on this issue? All right, seeing none, is there a motion on the floor to approve with, you know, with the language that we, with the revisions we just made, approve the language of EBC supplemental policy, supplemental policy relating to COVID-19 public health emergency? Is there a motion of that effect on the floor?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Marr. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coleri. Roll call vote in alphabetical order. Mrs. Coleri?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Marr?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McLoughlin. That motion unanimously passes. That policy has become effective. Lastly, turning to E3, the last policy we have to address today, which is IHBHE. It centers a lot around remote learning due to emergency. Mrs. Coleri or Mrs. St. Ange, would you mind introducing this?
So, this one I did get a little bit more feedback from council on as well. Actually, I got a lot of feedback from council. And one of the things that I wanted to ask, I, I don't know that this is in a condition that we can vote on it tonight. But, I mean, maybe it is, but I, I don't know that it is. Dr. Sullivan, did you see in the last paragraph here, it's recommended by council that we have our remote learning terms and conditions referenced?
Yeah. Just wanna make sure.
So one of the things I want to ask about that specifically is, we had a discussion, I don't know, you know, whatever, in one of the 52 hours we've had discussions, about the sort of, the, the school handbooks and the student
Yes.
The expectations are still going to be the same. It's just that we'll need to apply them to a remote situation in as much as it's possible, insofar as, you know, right?
Yes, and actually, actually, remember, we do have some remote learning conditions that were established when we began remote learning. And it's actually a disclaimer on all of our
Right.
emails. So yes, so there, there would need to be an updated set of those, which I don't think will need to significantly shift, but it would need to shift to be more applicable to the day and age, the time we are now. Obviously, it's different than it was in March. We're in a different stage of remote learning, if that's what you're talking about, so for sure.
Yep. Okay, so we would need to just reference that specifically here.
Yeah, and that was obviously grown up by council. And so, so that would be, there'd be, and that was based on, you know, our approach. So we can work on that with council, and then have the policy reference that, if that makes sense.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So that, to be clear, though, doesn't necess, it doesn't change the content of the policy. It would just require the addition of a reference, essentially, at the end.
Yep.
So, Lydia, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add.
So essentially, one of the things that we asked was whether this would sort of serve to address a lot of different emergencies, and we wondered if a snow closing would be an emergency. And it's not. We, we asked council about that, and she said no.
And I believe when we were discussing that, we clarified in the first line, in the event of a national, statewide, local, or district-specific emergency exceeding three days, because, you know, around New England, we do have some shorter-term weather-related emergencies that are becoming more frequent, it seems, and that time seemed like a good cutoff.
So I know I was part of the discussion, and I agreed with that point at first. Now I'm having reservations about, do we change it to maybe five days? I feel like, I, I mean, are we gonna be implementing remote learning, because we're out of school for three days? I mean, I feel like maybe a week is, is better. So I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, like, we did discuss also in that meeting that one of the reasons we might be out of school for three days is a loss of power, which doesn't necessarily lend itself well to remote, right? So I don't know. I
I, I feel like maybe a week is more appropriate, like five days, because that's like, you don't usually see that. I could see a power outage lasting for three days in a really, really bad, you know, hurricane or something. Does anyone, does anyone have a strong Does anyone, does anyone have a strong objection or a strong opinion into what timeframe we stick with there? Mrs. Mar?
That's interesting. Well, I, I don't know if it really matters three or five, because it says it may be employed. It's not saying it will be, it says it, it may be employed.
True.
So it may be employed, you know, or maybe not. It won't be employed after three or more days. And then, you know, it depends upon, you know, I think it depends upon the circumstance. So because of that word, I don't have a strong point of view whether it should be three or five days, because I think it gives us some, some latitude.
I think that's a good point. I still like the week better. But anyone else have any input on that?
I guess my only thought on timing is we, I guess, often in Cohasset, though it is small, experience these power outage emergencies very differently depending on our neighborhoods. So I guess, I don't know. I feel like if, if part of the town is like, still in this state of emergency, and we can kick into this, like, emergency remote plan and not continue our school year, I don't know, like, late into June, might we benefit from that at some point? I don't know.
That's, that's
Mrs. St. Ange does like her summers.
Yeah.
I do.
I'm right there with you. And if I, if I may, I mean, that's, that's a very interesting point. Because if, if we have this option, if, if we reduced it from three days to say one or two, we could effectively mitigate any snow days or inclement weather days. Now, school would be shut down if there were a power outage and there was no power available, you know, to, to the high school, say, specifically. Because if the high school closes because of power, then all the buildings are closed because the high school provides the food service to the other, to the other buildings. So to not lose days, I think two years ago, we had two or three days at Ausgood we lost because Ausgood was out of power. So I, I think that's interesting. I mean, Dr. Sullivan, what do you think about when, if we have, have a day off or, or something? You know, a snow day, or a bad weather day, or a hurricane? You know, to be able to continue to provide instruction and not have to tack it on at the end?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we should be able to do that with this, you know, with our remote learning capabilities. So, you know, if we're able to kind of power contingent about home too, though, right?
Right, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think that's a very thoughtful suggestion, really.
You know, that's actually a really good point, yeah. I mean, so maybe you broaden the ability to do it by reducing the days rather than extending them.
Well, it does say, in employing any remote learning plan during such an emergency other than due to temporary weather-related or facilities-related closures,
Yeah.
the superintendent must obtain approval from the school committee.
Well, and I recall during our original conversation, you know, I mean, everyone loves a good snow day or two, and then kind of done with it. But after that point, after two days, I feel like things do feel more emergent, right? Like, a day, or, you know, we need to plow, it's not safe to drive because of ice, that's one thing. But if we are in a point where we are out of school for three days, perhaps there's been a nor'easter, perhaps there's flooding, perhaps there's, I don't know, tons of trees down and, and whatever. But I feel like that, in my mind, and it's just me, more than three days out of school is a bigger deal than just a day or two.
Yep.
Okay. Why don't we go back in time and pretend like I never brought this up and just leave it?
Fabulous.
Great. Is there any, are there any other discussion points in the day, and see any other content that they have any issues with? Mrs. Mar?
So on, on page two, the third bullet point, the MASC language was consult. So this is under the, in developing a remote learning plan, the superintendent shall. And we've changed it to collaborate. And also on the personnel issues, I think that was something new that we put in. So I'd just be interested in, in that thought, on that bullet point.
I honestly think it's just a, a word choice that I, I really think sort of connotes the same thing.
That was actually a legal change, so I can ask that also?
Okay.
It would be nice to get as much business done as possible. I mean, Mrs. Mar, do you feel, do you feel strongly enough where we need to pause and, and get advice of council on that, that issue?
No, not in order to approve the policy, but I, I would just like to hear the rationale behind it, you know, just as a follow-up. You know, the, the only thing that might be a sticky wicket is the personnel issues, collaborate. We typically, that's typically out of the purview of the superintendent, unless it comes to budget, budgetary, was that the, the thought process behind personnel issues?
It's also a legal change.
Okay. Okay. That's it for me.
Okay, anyone else?
No.
Okay, is everyone comfortable taking a vote on this tonight? All right, I don't see any objections. So I, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve policy IHBHE, which has been marked as document E3 for the purposes of tonight's agenda. It is the policy on remote learning due to emergency. Is there a motion on the floor to approve this policy subject to the addition that we identified at the bottom where we referenced the remote learning terms and conditions? Is there a motion of that effect on the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Mar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Colerie. Roll call, vote in alphabetical order, Mrs. Colerie.
Hi.
Mr. Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. Mar.
Hi.
Mrs. St. Ange.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, that policy is unanimously passed, that motion is unanimously passed, excuse me, and the policy is effectuated, Dr. Sullivan. Moving on, are there any other comments or communications or updates from the subcommittees at this time?
I'd just like to say that the CPAC had a meeting today that I was part of, listening into. And I thought that was good to introduce the new director. And they're going to be meeting once a week, which I think is a great idea, just to keep everybody posted. But I attended that. Also too, is we had a wellness committee meeting this week that was very informative. We added two more members to the committee. Dr. Scollins and I sit on that committee. And, you know, it's really making a lot of progress. We're talking about the wellness and, of children in making sure that we address this during this crisis, because it is a very important. Now more than ever, we need the wellness committee. We talked about making sure that the kids have strong immune systems. You know, we're also going to be pushing washing hands, but we also want to be able to promote proper nutrition. This is the time to, you know, to fight off, if you do get the disease, to be able to have enough strength in your body to fight the disease off. So I was very, very happy to see the wellness committee come together. And yeah, and also too, is the Cohasset U14 softball team won the championship. I want to throw that in. It was a nice thing to see them come back and well-coached. And yeah, it's, it's nice to see some kind of normalcy back. And if it's on the softball field, it was nice to see. That's all.
I, I would like to just say that Safe Harbor is hosting their annual candlelight vigil for International Overdose Awareness Day on Monday, August 31st, on the Common, 6:45 p.m.
You're muted.
Oh.
No, no, Craig's muted.
No, I was. I'm trying to move us along. I don't see any other, are there any other comments or updates?
Just a quick update?
Sure.
So Lydia and I, Mrs. St. Ange and I, attended the Alternative Energy Committee meeting last, I think it was last week. And they're a very energetic group of specific note. I won't go into everything they talked about. They, as we all know, we approved in town meeting, you know, for them to be able to lease our school roofs. They're working on their request for proposals. They're in draft form now, will be going out soon. And with an awarding by October 31st. And they want to show if any of us wanted to be on, or anyone in the community to be on the evaluation subcommittee once the RFPs come in. For Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins, they had an interesting request. They were wondering if a student liaison, or if there was a student who might be interested in this as a field of study, would want to participate and represent, you know, Cohasset. I'm going to, I'm going to guess Cohasset High School, just because of the level of technology. So I don't know if you can have Mr. Scott put that out there, but they would love to have a student liaison you know, work alongside with them. With regards to the buses, they are going to look into electric buses. And they, they're well aware that we lease our fleet. And they're going to, you know, and they think it's going to be a one-to-two-year kind of proposition to, to undertake maybe testing an electric bus. But that could be kind of an interesting thing. I think a lot more work has to be done on that in terms of, you know, I, I think they know that our roots are, are small here, but we have so many out-of-district roots, you know, with athletics and, and band and chorus and things like that, that have to be factored in. Oh, and they also were talking about, you know, I did send along to Tanya Bodell, you know, where our roof replacement schedule sits as of the capital budget plan from this past spring. The middle high school is slated now for the year 2027, and the Ausgood Deer Hill for 2029, based on MSBA's new criteria for roofs at 25 years of age and not 20. So they have that information, and the RFP will include, you know, if it goes through prior to those years, it will include an installation on the current roofs, a removal, and then a reinstallation on the new roof. That would be part of what they put out. So
And we've recently reconstituted that new schools committee, so they're, they're very well, maybe, new roofs in 2027.
Right, right. And I did send along that information to Tanya Bodell, so that she's aware that, you know, that's going on. So she understands that there's a, there's going to be a committee and what the composition of the committee is. So that, that was all I had. I don't know, Mrs. St. Ange, if I missed anything.
Thank you, covered it beautifully.
Thank you.
Any other updates? Okay, seeing none, moving on, the next agenda item is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. One is the minutes from June 17th, 2020, meeting of the school committee. And the second is the July 8th, 2020, meeting of the school committee. All members were in attendance for both meetings, so all members can vote on this issue. Moving to the June 17th, 2020, meeting minutes. Are there any discussion points or suggestions or revisions, Mrs. Colerie?
Mrs. Mar was the one who suggested that we might be able to support the district in ways that would create a more diverse staff. I think it said, I'm going off, I don't have the minutes in front of me, I just have notes that I wrote on the finance report. So I apologize if I'm not, this is, I think towards the beginning of the minutes, if I remember correctly.
Okay. And by the way, I should note, I, I noted there were five members. This actual, Mrs. St. Ange, you weren't on a member yet, so you would not vote, you, you would abstain on this issue on the June 17th, 2020 minutes. So, Mrs. Colerie, where was that?
I think it's towards the beginning, sorry, I have to get the meeting minutes up on my screen. I don't usually print them out. Save the trees and all, you know.
So do you want me to make, Mr. McClellan, can I make some comments? She's talking for it. So I just have a note, Mrs. St. Ange, after the motion, well, before public comment, it should be noted, the committee re-entered open session at 5:02 p.m.
This is on June 17th?
Yep. No, it couldn't be, no, it wasn't 5:02, it was, it was 5:17. We were in executive session for 15 minutes.
Okay.
Okay. 5:17.
Yep. On page two, under elementary math adoption program, 1, 2, 3, fourth line down, the line starts with bridges, comma. So it says investigations in bridges to pilot throughout the year. They, they were piloted throughout the year, past tense.
Okay.
Oh, I found it. Are you, I'm sorry.
I just have one more, Mrs. Colerie.
Okay, sorry.
And then, under superintendent's year-end evaluation, second line, the, it, it says the committee was made up of four members. It should say the evaluation was a summary of four members that submitted the individual evaluations.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Colerie?
Okay, so under the school committee comments and communications, school committee statement regarding diversity and protests, I think it should actually read school committee anti-racism statement. But also in there, it said that I reviewed the school committee statement regarding diversity and protests. And I, and it says, she stated, making more of an effort to recruit and hire a more diverse workforce. I think it should be, Mrs. Mar suggested that the school committee could support the administration in recruiting a more diverse workforce.
Mrs. Mar, you agree with that?
Sorry, oh yeah, sorry.
Since I don't have a note to the contrary, sure.
And then in the, in the reports from subcommittee and liaisons, the italicized book title, "The Person You Mean To Me" should actually be "The Person You Mean To Be." Thank you.
Mrs. St. Ange, did you get all that?
I believe so, but in editing, I may
You can, you can reach out.
I may send an email, if that's okay.
Yes, you may.
Okay, any other revisions? Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor to approve the June 17th, 2020, school committee meeting minutes subject to the revisions we just spoke about? And a reminder, Mrs. St. Ange, you must abstain from this vote.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kearney, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar. Roll call, vote in alphabetical order, Mrs. Colerie.
Hi.
Mrs. Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. Mar.
Hi.
Mrs. St. Ange.
Abstain.
Craig McClellan, aye. The motion passes, those minutes are approved, subject to the revisions we spoke of. Next on the agenda is the approval of the July 8th, 2020, meeting minutes. Is there any discussion related to the substance of those minutes? Mrs. Mar?
Yes, just the very first line says Chairman Mar. It really should be Mrs. Mar. I was not chairman at that time, I was the, per our policy, I was the most senior member. And that's why I called the meeting to order.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yep, second page, under superintendent's report update. Fifth line down, starting with learning structure common, the second is a hybrid model with in-person meetings. I think we should, in-person instruction.
Or learning.
Or learning. I, I don't think that they were meetings.
Okay.
And same, two, two lines almost directly below that, it says meetings again. And I think it should either be learnings or instructions.
A good catch, thank you, Mrs. Mar.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Anyone else? Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor to approve the July 8th, 2020, school committee meeting minutes subject to the revisions discussed?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kearney, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar. Roll call, vote in alphabetical order, all committee members may vote on this, Mrs. Colerie.
Hi.
Mr. Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. Mar.
Hi.
Mrs. St. Ange.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously passed, and those meeting minutes have been approved, subject to the revisions discussed. Moving on to the next agenda item, follow-up and updates. Are there any follow-up and Are there any follow-up and updates that anyone feels compelled to share at this time?
Can I?
Yes.
I, I don't have a follow-up or an update. I think, if it's all right with the committee, we can remove this from our agendas. This, we started keeping a list of things that needed to be followed up on, because a lot of times, questions would be asked of committee members to the administrative team at the time, or to, community members would ask a question, and we never had a mechanism to come back and answer those questions. So we created a list by meeting of questions that went unanswered, and that was what the follow-up was. I think, I think Superintendent Sullivan and his team are a very well-oiled machine, and rarely, if never, don't answer a question. So, my suggestion is, I don't think we need to include this on any agendas unless anyone else has any thoughts about it.
Mrs. Marr, you are speaking my language. Does anyone, is everyone all set with removing that agenda item permanently? Do we need to take a vote on that?
Nope.
Okay.
There, you can take it off.
Dr. Sullivan, I think you can just let Jennifer know that, that that can be taken off in the future. I don't think it's, you know, groundbreaking, but, you know, can be done. Is that all right?
Of course, of course, yes.
Okay. Moving on, thank you for that, Mrs. Marr. Moving on, there's no topics reasonably anticipated by the chairperson 48 hours in advance of the meeting, or not reasonably anticipated.
There are.
There are?
There is one. Yes, we have a gift.
Okay. That certainly wasn't anticipated, because this is the first, I think, I'm hearing of it, so.
It was in an email.
Email, I didn't see it.
I think it was in an email, and I apologize, and I'm willing to defer if you feel it's not appropriate, but it could be pretty quick.
It wasn't an email today.
There you go. Today was not a good day, so.
It was a tough day. Let me just get the gift up here. Bear with me. Yep. Okay, can you all see the gift? Okay, this is a gift from the Kearney family. And this is a note thanking them for a donation by, from Principal Mills, a note thanking them for a donation of a 50-inch television, market value of $400, to Cohasset Middle School. This will be a great way of keeping students, staff, and any visitor updated on happenings, and can be very important in many situations that require communication. So, thank you, Mr. Kearney and family, and I leave it to the committee to, to vote on this as a gift for the middle school.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Kearney, and your entire family for that generous donation. Does anyone have a motion on the floor to accept that generous gift from the Kearney family?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Collieri. Is there a second?
Second, Mrs. St. Orange.
Seconded by Mrs. St. Orange. All in favor, please indicate so in roll call fashion, alphabetical order. Mrs. Collieri.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. Marr.
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Aye.
Aye, Craig McLoughlin. That unanimously passes. That gift is accepted. Thank you, Mr. Kearney, please, your family for us.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Generous.
Okay, were there any other emails that came through that I didn't see today? Do we have anything else?
No, no, that's it. Nothing else.
Moving on, the next agenda item is always one of my favorites. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting at this time?
So moved.
Second.
By Mrs. Collieri, seconded by Mr. Kearney. They'll do so in roll call, vote in alphabetical order. Mrs. Collieri.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. Marr.
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Aye.
Craig McLoughlin, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much. And thank you, well, no one's at home anymore listening, so I won't even say anything.
There are 20 people. There are 20 people. Give them credit.
Yeah, we still have.
Yes, thank you.
Serve an extra shout-out.
Well, thank you all so much for coming and participating.
Very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, good night.
We'll end the meeting now.